Thank you very much. I'd like to call to order the Fairfield Board of Education's special meeting focused on our budget for Tuesday, January 16, 2018. We have Ms. Pitko, Ms. Lieper, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Philip Dwyer, Mrs. Jacobson, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Jennifer Maxon-Cannelli, and Mr. Peterson all present. If I could ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So, welcome to the first of three meetings that are the focus for the 2018-19 budget. Just a couple of opening comments, and then we'll go directly into the presentation that we expect tonight on a topic that several board members have talked about. On the agenda, you'll know that it says we're focusing on these issues on these pages. Yes, it says page 33, but I think you'll know that the page prior to that where they have the narrative description of what the accounts are. If you have a question as to what that description really means, feel free to ask it. And also, if there are, as you know, further back in the book, there is detail on line-by-line issues that might be related to instructional services or tuition or whatnot. And so if you have questions on the detail behind it, then feel free to ask those questions as well on these particular topics. But our main conversation will focus on the information, the dollar amounts that are in on these pages. But feel free to ask further detail. Thank you to board members, and especially thank you to the staff for getting a series of questions answered that were sent in. And this document will be reviewed tonight and will be posted to our webpage under the budget, as is our custom tomorrow. And in order to help the staff, if you could get the next Tuesday's questions in a little sooner, maybe if you could get it in by Thursday, that would be very helpful to the staff as they try and chase through getting as much information to you as possible in advance of the meeting or at the meeting. And on next Tuesday, two things will happen. We'll say, okay, we're voting at the following meeting, and that'll be an opportunity to go through any final questions board members have prior to the vote. And the other thing that you should know is it is our custom to ask board members if you know of a change that you want to propose, to have the courtesy of giving fellow board members a heads up, and also especially the staff. So, for instance, next Tuesday, if you say, I know I'm going to want to suggest this, that allows two things to happen: board members to at least be thinking of the subject, but more importantly, the staff to kind of cost it out. As you know, if you have a thought, some of that cost of that issue might be on a staff salary line, some on a benefit, some on a supplies, some on a wherever. And so in order to come up with what is, what does this really cost us, or what does this really save us, it's important for the staff to have some time to cost out your proposals so that the board is dealing with known facts and not estimates from a board member that after the vote, our Director of Finance says, you know, that's not really a good number. So if you know on Tuesday, then the more advanced notice you give to the staff and the board, the better off we'll be. Last comment is, we have normally kind of just gone around a circle, and I've asked board members to say, take about 10 minutes when it's your turn, so that we don't start with Mr. Peterson, and 40 minutes later, he's still holding the floor, and he's asking every question other board members want to ask. So we try and go around at least one time with 10 minutes for each board member, plus or minus, and then we start a second series of questions. We have, in the past, somewhere around 10 o'clock, we lose steam, but we're allowed to meet till 11:00, and if six of you say you want to stay later than 11:00, well, that's on the six of you. Any questions on process or where we are? At the end of reviewing this, we will have public comment. Ms. Maxon-Cannelli.
Would it be possible, since we're then looking at a Tuesday-Thursday sandwich next week, that whatever questions have come into staff that they've had time to answer could go out in this form to us in our Friday packet, so we have a chance to look at them ahead of time? I mean, if someone doesn't submit a question until Monday, then we'll get it at the table, but whatever we have...
Throw the chair to the superintendent who directs her staff. Is that possible?
Absolutely. We would like for you to have the questions ahead of time, so if we get those, we will get them out to you. This time, we only had, I think it was one, and then on Friday, we had about four more. We just didn't have any questions. So pretty much, this is hot off the press today.
I know exactly when I sent mine in, so I've, no judgment on this one. It's only knowing next week.
Absolutely.
Now, if it's Thursday at 7:00 at night, getting it in the Friday packet might be a little bit more difficult. But certainly, if it's Thursday by, I'll say, noon, that gives the staff something to work with. Any other questions? Go to the order. If not, I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Jones so that she can introduce the presentation.
I'm going to ask Mr. Cummings and Mr. Mancusi to come forward. They are starting us off tonight with a presentation on pages right at the beginning of the budget, three through five, which are those targeted enhancements. And this is just so that the board has a full understanding of what those programmatic items are that are in the budget this year. And thank you to the board for allowing us to have a little bit of a different order tonight. As you'll notice, we've got quite a few people in the audience, so that if you have curriculum questions or special education-related, we have some additional staff that don't, aren't fortunate enough to come to every board meeting, but they're here tonight to be able to assist in answering questions. Ms. Cummings.
You're projecting up here?
No, this is...
Oh, okay. You're not projecting. You fooled us.
Do you want us to do our little snippet?
You fooled me.
Yeah, why don't you...
You want to start with that?
We have, we do have just a brief video...
You do.
...show of two of the CLCs that we have in the district, and who we're going to be talking about.
Hi, my name is Rob Mancusi. I'm the Director of Special Education. We're going to be showing you just brief snippets, about three or four minutes, of a CLC at Osborne Hill and a CLC at Roger Ludlow Middle School. I want to say that we've spoken to parents, we've gotten written consent to allow us to video, and just to give the board a sense of what a CLC looks like. I will say, this was a last-minute thing because we had some technical difficulties last week, so we had a more detailed video, but we did want to give you something, so we did put something together for you today. I'm going to call up Linda Jean Schwartz, our Coordinator of Special Education for Elementary Schools, and this is Jonathan Goodison to my right. He's the Special Education Coordinator for the middle schools.
What? We're excited to be sharing with you a brief glimpse into our Complex Learner Cohort, which is a program that we have for children with complex needs. Some children don't have any means of expressive communication, some have very specific learning disabilities, some have physical and motor disabilities, so they're impacted very differently by their disabilities. Within the Complex Learner Cohort, we have highly-trained teachers, paraprofessionals, ed trainers, and they're supported by behavior analysts, and the methodology used is applied behavior analysis. So we have some very quick little snippets to show you of a variety of the learners, so we can start. This next clip is Maddie, and she's just learning how to request for things that she needs or wants using her device. So obviously, we start with something she has a high preference for, which is food. This little guy is learning how to follow directions, imitate motor movements, and match And this young lady is practicing her reading. She's working on CVC words in the IN families, so she's reading those aloud. And this little guy is practicing his math skills by counting out from a larger group. Now you're going to see his token board. This is what he receives after he follows a complete direction. He receives a token which he cashes in for a reinforcer later. This is morning circle, which many of the CLC classrooms participate in for full-group experiences. They're using a Smartboard technology, and the kids just love it.
We have a couple of short snippets here of one of our CLCs at Roger Ludlow Middle School. What you'll see here are two of our middle school students working on a segregation unit ahead of some teaching that will be going on in the general education classroom. Many of our CLC learners do participate in the mainstream classroom with non-disabled peers, and they're able, in part, to do that because of the support they receive in the CLC. Here you'll see one of our students reinforcing some math skills that they are receiving in the mainstream classroom, as well as supported curriculum in the CLC, with support of special education teachers and paraprofessionals. And many times, they'll extend the mathematics, and like in this case, to talk about real-life application. In this case, they're talking about the cost of a bill. As you can see, we have a lot of materials, teacher-developed materials, as well as program-developed materials that help support our learners as well. One piece that we weren't able to get a video, but I wanted to share with you, is adaptive physical education, which is part of many of our CLC students, not just at Roger Ludlow Middle School, but across the district. Here are some generic examples of equipment that might be used to help develop fine and gross motor skills for some students to address sensory needs and also access physical activities in a meaningful way. Some of our students are even able to work on their fine and gross motor skills through this class, integrated into their curriculum. And as a corollary to that, here's a few, again, not, these are not Fairfield students, but some examples of activities that you might see in a typical adaptive physical education class, where students with a variety of disabilities are engaged in meaningful, healthy tasks with peers. So we appreciate your time here and the opportunity to share this video with you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for us?
Let's wait till we get everybody back at the table.
Okay.
So those are the videos. Do you have anything that you want to focus on, on pages three through five, or do you want to go directly into Q and A? Your choice.
Q and A.
Q and A, please.
Q and A. So we're focused on the information that is on pages three through five for this presentation, so...
You can swap. They had, they were asking about questions about CLC.
Oh, we didn't know if you had any questions about the, specific to the video.
Well, there might be, but...
Okay. Thank you all.
And if there are questions to the video, that means you'll come back up, right? Okay.
More than half.
Okay. So why don't we start with the written document, page three through five, and then if there are questions on the video, we'll wrap up with that. Any opening comments that you want to make before you go into the Q and A?
Good evening. Mike Cummings, Chief Academic Officer. We wanted to highlight several of the program initiatives that are covered in page three through five of the budget document. I was going to begin with just a few of the regular ed, general education initiatives, and then turn the mic over to Mr. Mancusi to talk further about the special ed pieces. I'm going to go, try to go through these relatively quickly. I've prepared this in advance of the questions, but have also modified it in response to some of the questions we did receive, so we not only answered those questions in the responses you received at the beginning of the meeting tonight, but also tried to highlight some further details of each of these initiatives. I'm not going to go through every initiative, just some of the ones that have perhaps garnered the most interest. The first one that I wanted to highlight was the 21st Century Learning Initiative. Some people have interpreted this as a one-to-one initiative. That's a language, quite honestly, that we're shying away from. That puts the, that language, the one-to-one initiative, really puts the emphasis on the technology. Our intent in term, thinking of this as a 21st Century Learning Initiative, is to really focus on the instruction and learning that becomes possible with the infusion of the technology. Some specific objection, objectives around that budget item is, are that we want to promote learning and work environment, which supports student content acquisition, collaborative work, communication skills, and problem-solving through ready access to content and tools. It is designed to promote the greatest require, excuse me, the requirements of the graduate, the academic expectations. We are preparing students for the college and work environments that they will encounter upon graduation, if not before. And we want to take advantage of the growing number of open-source materials and resources available to educators. And this particularly applies to the syncing of the technology into the science classrooms in the high school environments, as we start to think about resource acquisition for the new curriculum. Just some further details, we are, we are putting money in this initiative also into professional development. As I said at the beginning, we do not believe the technology alone is going to be able to deliver the promise of these expectations. So we are putting money into the professional development for our staff, including our teachers and administrators. Our staff will be working, starting next week, to deepen the vision for this work. We are very committed to this capturing the voice of the staff. Many of our teachers are already working to implement this type of work in their classrooms. They are the lead learners, they are the lead teachers for, for many of us in this work, so we will be working with them to capture this vision. We need to build an online collaborative tool for our staff in order to share documents and information across school sites, and we are going to explore how we look at our traditional meeting and professional development structures as a result of this. The administrators in the district, district need to lead this work through their own Just to be clarified, this is intended for grade seven at all three middle school sites, and it is also intended for the high school departments and social studies and science at all of our high schools. There'll be a slight difference in how we do this. At the high schools, this, these devices, additional devices, will be placed in the classrooms for classroom access. At the middle school, we were, our intention is to get the devices actually into the hands of students, and they will carry their devices throughout the day. By doing this, we also know that we'll be freeing up devices already on all these sites for use in other departments. So while we're specifically working with grade seven and the science and social studies departments at the high school, we also are going to be involving our grade six, eight, and other high school departments in the work this year, because they're also going to be positively impacted by the infusion of new devices.
Mr. Cummings, what page are you on?
I was on page, I believe that's page three.
You began with a mention of 21st century skills, and I, that, you lost me right there.
None of us could see something that said 21st century skills.
It's the...
It's number four. Implementing a transformative approach.
Yep.
So everything you just said relate to that topic?
It does.
Yes, thank you.
I'm now looking at the EL program initiative. That is, I apologize, I didn't link this to the page. Well, I would look at this as page three. This is part of our intervention work in math and reading. This was mentioned at, as you recall, at the...
Again, could you use the phrase that's actually typed in here?
Sure, I will. Continued focus on interventions for pre-K-12 in math and reading.
Thank you.
And with a specific focus on English learners.
Thank you.
So the objective of this work, as the board knows from our previous presentations, we have a growing and diverse needs of English-language learners in the district. One of our challenges in that is that, given the size of the district and the number of learners across the sites, we are, struggle to provide high-level services to students in some of the buildings with a smaller population. To give you an example, this year at Dwight, we had two students who were brand-new to our country with a Russian background, they were in two different grades, and Dwight, they were essentially the only EL students at Dwight. So it was difficult to provide them the highest level of service, given the staffing issues we have across the district. So what we're, our intention is to develop a newcomer academy at each of the levels, elementary, middle, and high, in order to better support and concentrate these students' needs. So the idea is that we would concentrate students, if you remember back to the board presentation on the data, we identified our highest English-language learner needs as level one or two. This would concentrate students of level one or two in those sites, in order to provide them the best support for their learning. These programs would be staffed by certified EL teachers drawn from our current district staff. This would allow us to provide the greater concentration of resources in order to best support these students as they newly acquire English, the acculturation into our country and into our community, and then move them more quickly back into their buildings. It's difficult to do that now when students are, as I said before, scattered across the district, so that's our intention of this. In order to accomplish this, essentially what we're doing is we're taking three certified EL staff from, right now, district-type assignments, and we're putting them into these programs. In order to continue to support the needs of other English learners that remain in the buildings, we want to supplement our certified teaching staff with three paraprofessionals. The paraprofessionals would help support the needs of the most, the students with the greatest English acquisition at that point, the level three and four students. So that's the staffing need, essentially to replace the three teachers who are coming into the newcomer academy with the, excuse me, the paraprofessionals.
Do you want to take questions as you go along, or do you want to wait till you finish your presentation?
I can take questions now.
I don't know who went first, but Ms. Gerber, followed by Ms. Pitko.
And maybe I'm jumping the gun, but where will these three separate sites be for elementary, middle, and high school?
We haven't determined that yet. One of the things we have to do is they have to identify where space would be available. In order to minimize transportation costs, the most readily available, where most students are concentrated, the middle level is Tomlinson, and at the high school would be Ward, but we still have not yet finalized that. The elementary, it's a question mark. While the greatest number of students are at McKinley, McKinley also has, we have some concerns about space there, so we may have to think about a different place at the elementary level.
Okay, and then I guess also, do you have a sense, as of now, of, for numbers in each level for elementary, middle, and high? Like, how many students are we looking at?
Well, we're looking at quite a number. Right now, based on our current number, about 44% of our 230 students or so are level one and two students. That's too many students to be accommodated in the newcomer academy. So one of the pieces of work that we have to do going forward is to identify the criteria for entry into this. We're going to have to be selective. So let me put it another way, not all level one and two students would wind up in a newcomer academy.
Okay, so I guess then, maybe I'll change the question a little. So do you have, like, a maximum number? I mean, I understand you're not quite sure about the sites, but would you say we would not want to go over 30 or 50?
Fifteen.
Fifty per site?
Fifteen per site.
Oh, 15?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're looking at a total of 45 across the three levels?
That's right.
Maximum?
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Pitko.
So would it be fair to say, then, that possibly you need new learner academies at Holland Hill and McKinley?
It would be possible, but we're only staffing for one at the elementary level now. And again, Holland Hill is another school site that faces, as you know, some, some space challenges, so we probably are going to look at a school at the elementary level that would be able to accommodate the program.
So talking about busing the students who need to be in the new, I'm sorry, the academy from Holland Hill to McKinley?
We would transport students, if it's not their home school, we would transport them to this newcomer academy.
Whatever site is chosen.
Okay, so my last question, I'm sorry. And any student who is not in the feeder pattern for any of those schools, but would qualify for this program, would we possibly bus them to this?
If they qualify for the program, we are obligated to provide busing for them.
Okay. Ms. Lieper, followed by Ms. Maxon-Cannelli and Mr. Peterson.
So I spent a good amount of time looking specifically at our ELL teacher and ELL para FTEs, and I didn't see any new additions. Did I miss something, or is it just a reshuffling of, of our existing staff?
There's a, there's a shuffling of the EL certified teachers. There's an addition of three ELL paraprofessionals into the staffing.
That relate to this program?
Relate to this, to this program.
Do you happen to know where we would find that? I was looking by school, so if this is yet to be assigned to a school, I could understand it might not be there.
We didn't assign them to schools, I'm going to just turn to Ms. Sieg.
So I wonder if we could...
Too specific.
...give the staff a chance to kind of find out the answer to that, and when we go through the, the page-by-page stuff, maybe we'll get a answer slipped in there, even though staff is supposed to be dealt with next Tuesday. Continue. No, wait a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, here it is. I found it.
Oh, you found it.
If you look at page 140, where it says 18-19, all staffing changes, if you look on the right-hand side of the page, at the bottom, it says, "Non-certified staff additions", and it says, "ELL paraprofessional District III FTE."
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli.
I'd also have the question about the sites, but, all right, at first, I'd been thinking we were going to have bigger numbers with this, but if we're only talking about 15 at the elementary school level, so that would be 15 in a general ed classroom, so that's the size of what they would need, correct?
Correct.
And what would be their designated home school?
Designated home school, the idea of this program is to be as short-term as possible. So, you know, and I don't have a timeline of it, you know, it would be no more than 12 weeks, but the idea would be that you'd have a shifting population of students during the course of the year. They wouldn't be assigned there for the entire school year.
Oh, okay.
And once, once exit criteria is, is met, they'd return to their home school.
Okay, because initially...
And I'm sorry, but then be supported, continuing by EL staff in their home school.
Right. So that, if this isn't something that would be like a year-long thing, so that we're talking about also possibly impacting racial imbalance issues or anything like that? This would have no impact on that? Because it's short-term.
This is, this intention is to be as, if, I don't want to overstate the expectation for speed here, but to be as quick as possible in, in getting these students up to speed to return them to their home school setting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Peterson?
Well, I think most of my questions probably subsumed in, in that answer to the question. I guess my, I have a couple of angles on this. So we're looking at, at a... So, we're looking at a, one teacher, one certified teacher at a elementary, one at middle school, one at the high school level, with a capacity of 15 each. Do you have any sense about how kind of lumpy the numbers are? Like, do we have more, far more elementary ELL students than high schoolers? And if that's the case, if it's not kind of a smooth distribution, is that, how is that going to work?
We do have a higher number of elementary students. We have seen, though, that we have students entering at all grade levels now with two issues. One, obviously, being their lack of English as a native language. The other issue that we face that complicates the problem, particularly in the secondary level, both at middle and high, is that they may lack formal schooling. They may have missed years of schooling. So, there's a, there's a, as you think of the equation for the level of time that those students are in the program, they may require more time in the program than, say, an elementary student, because we're not only there building up their English vocabulary and familiarity with the language, but we also are going to have to work to supplement some skill development.
All right, I mean, you're talking about both, for certain students, some language learning plus some kind of acculturation?
Yes.
To the educational system, okay? And I guess my other thought about this, and you mentioned that you want this to be kind of as short-term as possible, 12-week type program, the way you're shifting the inexperienced teachers and moving them into the academy setting and replacing them with paraprofessionals, with the assumption that the ones that they're dealing with are at a higher level of English accomplishment. I guess in that sense, is there, I would worry about the pairs being overwhelmed in some situations where they're dealing with larger numbers, you know, in a setting where, before this program was instituted, there was, there was a certified teacher.
Yes.
You see what I'm getting at?
Yes. This system works well when you build into the schedule of both the EL paraprofessional and EL teacher collaboration time, to oversee the lesson development, to identify student needs, and to target instruction. That's absolutely crucial. You can't do this system and expect a paraprofessional to go out and do this on their own.
Great.
So, we have to build that into the schedule.
Mrs. Jacobson, followed by Ms. Pitco.
Are you still on the ELL? Because I'm moving to...
I am.
Okay, why don't you go ahead first? Sorry, Phil.
Please do.
I'm on a different subject.
Did any consideration come to maybe instead of paraprofessional ed trainers? Just a thought.
We didn't look at that model, no.
Okay.
So, you have a different topic?
I do. So, everyone done with it?
But it relates to one of the two things that they've already talked about?
Relates to three through five. Pages three through five.
The presentation's not done.
Yeah, focus on their presentation, if you will, at the moment.
Okay.
So, you've talked about two topics. Is there a third topic that you?
Well, there's always more to talk about. I wanted to talk about, on page three, the, there was quite a number of questions around this, and the STEAM program, so it's the last initiative on page three, implement a systemic focus on STEAM education in three through five. I'm going to couple that with the gifted program as well, because the programs are linked in FTE.
Which is on page four.
It's on page four.
Under leadership capacity, strengthening the role of the gifted leadership, three through five.
And I will follow this discussion immediately with, also on page four, the, I think it's on page four, I apologize, the change in the elementary program leadership, yes, under leadership capacity, the first bullet, the elementary program facilities. So, I'm going to link these two roles. Essentially, the elementary STEAM...
You're linking these three topics, the STEAM and these two here.
Yes, these three.
Yeah, thank you.
Elementary STEAM, gifted program initiative. So, the initiative for this change, or the reason for these changes are several, but the first being that we wanted to provide a greater consistency of program to identified gifted students. One of the current issues we have with the split IIT/gifted instructional program is that it's very difficult to marry an FTE that is based on a scheduled service, like gifted education, with a, with an FTE that's based on kind of what the day will bring, which is the IIT role. They can often be in conflict as things arise in a building. And one of the things that we've been conscious about consistently across our sites is ensuring that the gifted instruction is delivered. But we want to do two things. We want to make sure that that role is separated out from the IIT, the leadership position, and two, we want to provide a greater consistency of instruction across the gifted program at all sites. So, we've, the, that's one portion of the new role. We have coupled that with the initiative to increase the instruction of the STEAM content areas together in grade three through five. Dr. Jones, in her budget presentation, talked to you about one of the disappointing statistics that we uncovered as we prepared the budget, and that was the number of female students currently taking computer application skills courses at the high school. We are intentional in developing a three-through-five STEAM curriculum that is going to be focused on problem-solving, inquiry, and the integration of those contents areas of science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. All students in grades three through five will receive a period of that once over the six-day rotation for about 30 lessons per year. We will begin to develop that curriculum and those lessons this spring, in order to implement, obviously, at the beginning of September. The teacher of gifted will also be the teacher of STEAM, the STEAM instruction in grades three through five. We determined an FTE at the building level based on, for gifted, the number of identified gifted students per school, and for the STEAM, based on the number of grade three through five sections per school. So, for a large part, each STEAM/gifted teacher will be at two sites. So, that's how we developed it. The FTE, there is no change in the current level of instruction that gifted students receive. So, even though you see a reduction in FTE at gifted per site, many of the sites, there's no decrease in the instructional amount of instruction that identified gifted students receive. The blanket FTE of .5 at each of the elementary schools was, in some cases, more than the school needed to support its gifted students. So, we've tried to, since, reduce that program to what it's needed to provide the necessary service, and then, as I say, couple it with the STEAM initiative. There is, by the way, on page eight of your questions, I know there were a number of questions about, you know, follow the FTE ball, that page eight, there is a chart that I can break down for you further if you wish, that breaks out the FTE by school from the current role of IIT/gifted to the two new roles of elementary program facilitator and STEAM/gifted, or gifted/STEAM.
Anything else on these three related?
Not on that. I see questions, so I was...
Any questions on these three related? Ms. Leeper?
If the FTE is staying the same, what's the driving force behind the savings? It's quite significant at some locations.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow, you said the savings?
Yeah, well, it's a reduced budget for this line item, but the FTE is staying the same. So, what's driving the savings?
The FTE, in the specific allocation for gifted, is actually reduced. The FTE, if you look at page eight, let me, you don't mind, I'll just walk through page eight for, the chart on page eight for a second. As you could see, in our current staffing model at the elementary level, we have, at each of our elementary schools for IIT, at nine of our 11 elementary schools, I'll say, a 0.5 FTE for the IIT, the exception being Holland Hill and McKinley, who have a 1.0 FTE.
That's page eight in the packet, not in the budget.
We have also, at the elementary level, each of our elementary schools has a 0.5 FTE for gifted. And as I said earlier, some of that FTE exceeds the amount of students that are identified under the gifted criteria for the district. So, we have a total, therefore, between the two, of 12 positions. As we break this out in our proposal for 1819, we give every elementary school a 1.0 elementary program facilitator, for a total of 11. And then, we do, if you follow across, if you look to the gifted FTE column, you'll see that that's, that total column now is 2.4 for gifted FTE. So, that's a reduction of 3.1 FTE for gifted on FTE, and I want to emphasize again, with no reduction in the gifted services. But, we've now added into that position, or those positions, a total of 3.7 FTE for STEAM education. And again, that number is based on the number of class sections. So, you can see in that column, grade three to five total class sections. So, for example, at Burr, there's nine total sections, many of our schools actually have nine, around nine sections. That's a .5 FTE. And that was done simply by making a calculation of how many times they would have to meet over the course of the six-day schedule. So, that's a total of 3.7. You add it to the 2.4, and the STEAM/gifted FTE is a total of 6.1. So, if you add the 11 for the elementary program facilitator and the 6.1 for the STEAM/gifted, you, at 17.1, subtract out the current IIT/gifted of 12, and subtract out the reduction of three elementary staffing positions due to lower enrollment, and the total net increase of FTE at the elementary level request is 2.1.
So, if we're getting now actually more FTEs, what is driving the lower budget?
I don't follow, which part of the...
Like, for gifted and STEAM, on every school line, nearly, it is a savings of quite a lot of money, but yet, you're saying we're actually hiring more facilitators?
Are you specifically in the STEAM and IIT, STEAM and gifted?
Yes, I can get a page. Thank you, 49. So, for example, yeah. You know, if you go down the line, Burr, it's $16,050 less. Dwight, $23,000 less. Holland Hill, $1,300. Jennings, $29,700, on and on. But if we're not changing the staff, what are we saving money on?
So, the question being, if you look at, I'll take, go back to Burr for a second. The gifted is 0.5 now, it's 0.5 next year.
Mm-hmm.
And therefore, your question is, why is the staffing go down $16,000?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm going to turn to Ms. Munzel.
Just to check with the superintendent, I know that we were planning on all personnel questions and staff salary questions to be next Tuesday.
Okay.
So, unless there's a quick answer by our HR director, there isn't, okay? So, whoever's recording the questions, could you record that question so that it gets answered in the Q&amp;A that gets handed out, and it gets credited to Ms. Leeper's question?
Okay. Can I then make a request? On page 121, I find the budget by program really helpful, but I didn't, unless I missed it, see a specific budget for STEAM and gifted, and that might be a way we could discuss this topic without getting into the personnel. But if anybody has that, knows that number...
It's in general instruction?
But not parceled out.
And so, so, correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Munzel, but this budget has been developed by account member, you know, major and minor account members. It is not a program budget where we've taken all of the costs related to a program and put them in one section, because, as I mentioned earlier, if you're going to talk about a suggested change, the staff have to really go through various account lines to get up to where, what is the cost of that program or the savings of that program? Is that a fair statement? Okay, thank you. Let me, I think, Mr. Peterson, did you have your hand up?
No, I'm not.
You did not, okay. Ms. Gerber, followed by Ms. Pitco. I'm sorry, Mrs. Leeper, were you done?
Yeah, there's not an answer, I guess.
Okay.
There's an answer, we have to get it to.
Okay.
Okay, this, and again, this may not be able to be answered tonight, but I did just want to bring it up, since we're discussing the two, the gifted STEAM and the elementary program facilitator. One question is that Holland Hill and McKinley only have .5.
Point five?
.5 FTE for the elementary program facilitator?
Oh, okay, yes.
I just, because you had said 1.0, and then I saw that, and so, and I know that it's not necessarily in terms of size, because there are smaller schools like Dwight and Jennings that have 1.0, so I just was curious as to what the rationale was behind that.
The reason for that, thank you for pointing that out. The reason for that is that .5 of that position is paid for by Title I funds.
Ah.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, just to, and this is the part of the question that might not be able to be answered tonight, it's somewhat similar to Ms. Leeper's, except in the opposite direction, where there are widely varying salaries for the, this new position. And in some cases, you can kind of see doing the math, because you're going from a .5 to a full, but in others, there wasn't a very large increase, or as large an increase, or a larger increase. And I was just curious as to if there was some rationale, because these are all going to be new positions. I understood, I've been kind of going through the questions and answers really quickly, and I did see something that, I guess, the IITs will have the ability, if they so wish, to, I guess, either stay on in their building in this new capacity, or perhaps go to a different building in this capacity. So, I just was curious, though, as, because also, again, the size of the school didn't necessarily seem to jibe with what the size of the salary was. I just wondered if there was a rationale behind it, as opposed to the needs at a particular school were such that you would want to have someone being paid more. So, I just was curious about that.
The, all these positions are going to be posted, both the elementary program facility and the STEAM/gifted position will be posted. And we've had a conversation with the current IIT and gifted teachers last week, and essentially told them they're going to have to reapply now, make some decisions about what they would like to do and pursue. The current staffing could, and I have to clarify this, we will clarify this, but could be based on currently who's there, but they may not be the people there next year.
Okay, yeah, I thought that might be it, but then, when I read the answer about the fact that that's not necessarily going to be the case, and I guess, and I don't know if I'm allowed to ask this question, but I'm just going to put it out there, would the current IITs have perhaps slight precedence if they wanted to remain in their building, or is it just everyone's at the same level, starting from square one?
Well, when you move to hire, and we've had a conversation at the elementary level, that we're going to be hiring essentially collectively. But as you hire for any position, as you know, that experience is always a factor.
Right, yeah, because I just know we have some really excellent IITs who have been in some of their buildings for a long time, and so, wanted to stay in those buildings. I think it would be a huge, you know, boost to, you know, with a new position, so just wanted to put them out there.
Ms. Pitco?
I helped create the gifted curriculum in my previous district. I just wanted to see if this had changed. I know that we are required to identify gifted students. Are we now going to be required to provide gifted instruction? I know we're one of the districts that has this, and it's great. I just, I thought I read somewhere that now this is going to be something that all school districts have to do. That's my first question.
And you mean required by some outside agency?
The State Department of Ed.
That is my understanding, that while, and I may not have the exact timeline on this correct, but while that's not yet been declared, that ship does seem to be on the horizon.
So, my next question, I'm a science teacher, I love the whole idea of STEAM, just trying to understand the model that you're moving towards with, you know, a portion of STEAM, portion of gifted, are they still, especially in the elementary school, going to also focus on history and social studies like Model UN?
Yes. One of the challenges, as you've heard me say before, is fitting it all in. We see this as, while the elementary science curriculum is still coming, we see this as an opportunity to begin to bring some of that instructional methodology forward into the elementary program. One of the... One of the basic tenants of this program initiative, as we discussed with the elementary principal team, was that they wanted the classroom teacher to remain in the classroom when the STEAM teacher does teach the students. It's an opportunity to collaborate around student learning. And it, we've not yet begun to think about, other than perhaps in my own head, how this is going to fit on, say, a progress report, or how this is going to look for accountability measures. And by that, I don't mean the grade so much as how it might integrate, this is what I really mean, by how it might integrate with math and science. But it's a place where we try to see where these things can actually intersect, so that the, the idea always in the elementary, because the great advantage of the elementary is you have a teacher in that classroom, is how do you begin to work across curriculum boundaries to integrate learning for students? So, yes.
Is there a, on these three topics, right? Please ask, Mrs. Max and Cannelly.
So just to be clear, so this STEAM will become a grades 3 through 5 special?
It's not a-
In its own classroom, but?
It's a special, I want to be careful though, because as often defined at the elementary level, a special is when a teacher, the classroom teacher has a prep. This is not that. This is not going to replace PE, or art, or music, library media in K4. This is a class where the teacher will push in, but the classroom teacher will remain in the classroom.
And, which I understand. So, I'm just picturing that fifth grade, and I don't, this is not a question, it's just a comment of good luck in terms of that fifth grade scheduling of now gifted, orchestra, band, PE, art, music, STEAM. Have at it.
I appreciate the good wishes.
And then, and I assume this is also closely tied to the bullet point that was right above STEAM education on page three, that whole idea of the inquiry-based instructional strategies. I assume this is all tied into that as well?
That is, thank you, yes. Yeah, we're going to work on an initiative this year to, this summer, our plan is to bring staff together and specifically train them, including the teachers in this new program.
So what used to be three topics are now kind of four topics within these checkmarks. Ms. Pitco.
I just had a quick follow-up to Mrs. Max and Cannelly. So I've been actually going into teach science in my daughter's kindergarten class. Will the gifted teacher then become the lead teacher, or is this going to be like a co-teaching model, if the teacher's pushing in?
I don't, I'm not sure what you mean by lead teacher.
So in other words, the gifted slash STEAM teacher, they have to come up with the lessons to do, right?
Yes, they'll be doing that collaboratively, yes.
So are they going to be co-teaching, or is this like a push-in model, where they're just going to support the students in the classroom?
No, they will be, they will be, I would say, the lead teacher, I'm sorry then, they would be the lead teacher when they go into the classroom.
Okay.
But we want the classroom teacher there, because, one, they know the students, but we're looking for, as we develop the curriculum and the lessons, we want to think specifically ahead of time how they integrate with current curriculum, and support current curriculum. So they're extensions in a sense of the math, science, and things like that.
Thank you.
Any other questions on these four topics? If not, is there another topic you want to highlight?
No, that would be it.
Okay.
On my level. I would turn it over to Mr. Manicuso.
That covers the presentation. We do have targeted enhancements, page 3 to 5, so now is the time for people to ask questions on any of the checkmarks that have not already been discussed. And I think Mrs. Jacobson really had the first shot, and followed by Ms. Leeper and Ms. Pitco.
Go ahead, if you will follow up, go ahead.
A follow-up question to the EL Academy. If it's too late to go backwards, is that?
Oh, it's too late to go backwards?
Is that okay?
No, please ask.
So the English learners who are not going to be selected for the Academy because their English acquisition is more advanced, previously were receiving English language services from a certified teacher, EL teacher, is that right?
That's correct.
And now, in lieu of that, they will be receiving their services from EL para exclusively? Or will they also have an English language learner teacher?
We have not worked out the details of that, but I would not say exclusively from a paraprofessional, no.
Okay.
And certainly, any service that would be provided by a paraprofessional would be overseen by a certified teacher. And I apologize to interrupt, but I would also point out, and if the board is interested, with us tonight are two of our ELO curriculum liaisons, Colleen Rodriguez at the secondary level, and Michelle Gudiel from the elementary. So if there's any questions that you have specifically about, and I want to thank them for being here. But if there's any questions you have about current services, and, you know, as I said, a lot of our details are still being worked out. In fact, we're meeting tomorrow afternoon to start to flesh much of this out. But they can talk to you more specifically about the needs of our current cohort of students, and how they see this program enhancing instruction. At least they better.
I don't in any way want to sound like I doubt the ways in which this program can enhance, enhance the needs, the ability for the district to meet the needs of our English learners. I, my own ignorance on the way English language learner services are provided, what percentage of time do students spend in receiving those services? I'm imagining it's not the full day. Is it like a pull-out, or like some other related service?
Much of the service now is pull-out at the high school level. It's built into, at the secondary, at the middle school level, it's built into their schedules. The elementary, it's built into their schedules too. You make students come together to receive services, so they'll come from, you know, different classrooms at the grade level, or from different teams at the secondary. And again, it's part of their high school schedule.
And then one last, and you probably won't have this, but is it possible to get, like, the graduation rate for English language learners out of an EL designation, to just now no longer learning English, but having acquired English?
So, to be specific, you want the graduation rate of EL-identified students?
Yeah, not graduating from high school, but just like graduating out of needing the service.
Oh, out of service.
She's talking about like lost links.
Yeah.
Okay, so now, I accepted Mr. Cummings' answer for, are you done with presentation for both of you, and I kind of realized that it's, he was only answering for himself.
As always.
You had, you had some, a couple of comments that you wanted to make on your own checkmarks, but if you'd give me some courtesy, I'll have Mrs. Gerber ask a follow-up on?
On the Academy.
On the Academy.
The ELO Academy, yeah, I just, and you might not know this right now, because of it's kind of contingent on the budget, but do you have some sort of a timeline that, you know, you'd like to have a plan in place, or finalized? Just, you know, how much time would it need, would you need before the start of the 18, 19 school year to have everything in place for the Academy program?
I would like to have the program details all worked out by May.
Okay. Thanks.
So, let me go to Mr. Manicuso for his comments on his checkmarks, and then we'll go back to the general checkmarks.
Thank you, sir. Okay, my first comment is on page four. The first check, I just want to briefly discuss the elementary facilitator, the elementary program facilitator position. A large part of the responsibility of that position will be to oversee, or to assist the principal in overseeing all the provisions and delivery of special education services, 504 services, and the SRBI process. So, and they will be working with me, as well as Mike, to help create increased consistency in terms of service delivery across our schools. The next item I'd like to discuss is page five. The second check, implement a complex learner cohort with a social-emotional focus to build the capacity of staff to work with students who have behavioral challenges. We've been challenged this year, and I don't think we're any different than any other district, where we're really being challenged by behavior right now, particularly at the elementary level. We don't have a behavioral program for students with social-emotional needs. We feel that we can build a high-quality program to maintain students within the district. We're looking, with the board's support, to develop a program next year at Riverfield School, where we would hire one teacher, special ed teacher. We would max out the enrollment at eight students. And then, as we continue to fill, like, enrollment, we would hire up to two ed trainers, up to two paraprofessionals to support the program. We're proposing hiring a full-time social worker to support the families and the students in this program, as well as some psychological consultation to work with families for program setup, programs set up, and to do some trainings with staff and with families on managing student behaviors and student social-emotional needs.
Is that it?
That's it on that.
Any comments on Mr. Manicuso's commentary at the moment? Ms. Vitale.
Just some clarification, this is going to be at Riverfield, eight students max. I imagine the need district-wide is more than eight students that have these behavioral challenges. Do you see some of the program implementation at Riverfield being brought to other schools? Not necessarily through a CLC, but just some training of staff at other elementary schools?
That's certainly a possibility, open to us. I will say, in terms of the students, the eight, the number eight for that max, it's been my experience, that if you go over eight with a class with students with high needs, it becomes difficult to manage. Currently, we have identified potentially three candidates working with the principals for the program, and there's a couple students that we needed to outplace, that we'd like to begin to work with families about potentially returning them to district.
Ms. Pitco.
On page five, I didn't actually see the complex learner cohort that you wanted to add at the middle school?
Yeah, I apologize.
Okay, so that should have been in there.
Yeah, I apologize.
It's contained within that statement, it's both elementary and middle.
It's two different ones. Yeah, it only says a complex learning cohort. That's why I was trying to clarify, that there would actually be two additional.
There is, we're also looking to add a CLC at Tomlinson. Tomlinson does not have a CLC. This will allow students in the Tomlinson feeder pattern to remain in their home school. So, we are looking to do that. That would involve hiring a special education teacher, and, you know, again, the same as the CLCS, we would be hiring support staff à la paraprofessionals or ed trainers based on, as enrollment increases. We're looking to hopefully bring two students we have targeted at bringing back, and a potential third to start the program.
So I have one more question. It says the second to bottom check, implement a high-quality intensive support program at the high school level, and that's not a complex learning cohort? If you could just speak to that.
Yeah, any more questions on the middle school programs? Okay. Or the CLCS?
Go back, no, actually, back to the elementary program facilitator that you first discussed. I was just curious, the responsibilities that you went through, and I jotted, I think, most of them down, are those different from what the IIT teachers do now? Or do they do some of those responsibilities, and this is just kind of formalizing it more? Are they taking on more? I'm just kind of curious as to exactly how the two compare in terms of those types of responsibilities.
Okay. I'm going to give a stab at it, being the new guy in town, I think I understand. Currently, the IIT position is split. This will allow somebody whose primary focus is the things that I said. They do assist with PPTs, but the PPTs fall a lot on the principals.
Right, yeah.
So, this is, and Mr. Cummings had said, when it comes to hiring, we hope to hire people with extensive experience or background in overseeing special education and the implementation of 504 programming. So then, you know, the learning curve is not really there. We'll do some training with our staff, so we can be consistent in terms of what is expected of the position across the district.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Max and Cannelly.
Okay, so this is including the video and some of your comments. Those CLC classrooms that we saw, those were in regular general ed classrooms at those schools, correct? I'm thinking especially of the elementary school.
Some of those snippets, I believe, were within a general ed setting, and some were within, you know, the CLC, or the-
I meant in terms of the space allocation, that a CLC will be designated with a, what we would call a general ed classroom space.
A full-size classroom.
Yes, 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 I'm sorry.
That's what I was wondering.
I apologize.
And, and just to, I ask a question I already know the answer to. If you could clarify more how differentiated instruction simply does not meet the need of those students we saw in that video? I was wondering if you could speak to that a little bit more, in terms of why we need the CLC.
I will say, your CLC students, or our CLC students are, generally speaking, are most impaired students in the district. Many districts don't have the luxury to have the CLC programming that we have in Fairfield. So many of those students are not able to be educated within the public school systems, and they must be placed out of the public school system at the cost of $125,000 plus, depending on their specific needs. So, it's intensive programming. These students have significant needs, many of them are nonverbal, they need to be taught alternative ways to communicate, many of them have feeding protocols, many of them need assistance with personal hygiene, many of them have motor difficulties, where they require, you know, assistive walkers to help them get around. So, their IEPs are obviously individualized. These programs for these students are highly individualized, progress is measured based on goals and objectives. We do try to support them to the fullest extent possible with in a meaningful general education activities, so they can spend time with non-disabled peers, they do spend time with non-disabled peers, and we consider them a very, very vital part of our school system.
The video, the clips we saw where obviously they were getting more of the physical component of their education, would those be led by our general ed specials teachers, or is that still by their CLC staff?
Mrs. Schwartz, can you please come up and answer that question?
And for our TV audience, if you would introduce yourself.
Yes. Hi, I'm Lynda Jean Schwartz, Special Ed Coordinator for the elementary program. Can you repeat your question, please?
Sure, so that, for example, when we saw those, the scenes, again, not Fairfield students, but of the students who were in the gym, getting that, those different, that exercise that looked like it was in a gym. Is that being led by the CLC teacher, or are those our general ed special teachers who would be doing that?
I understand the question now, I apologize. It's in consultation, but our PE teachers do, our adaptive PE teachers do facilitate adaptive physical education classes for our students.
Okay, and then, I think it's my last question on this. Is there any extent that the CLC program at any of the schools, where they are in any way integrated with other general ed classrooms, or are all of these programs basically isolated?
No. So the goal is to have the students participate in the general ed curriculum alongside their non-disabled peers as much as possible, and as much as is appropriate for each child based on their needs. So, much of what you saw in those videos was really just pre-teaching or practicing skills that the students need to utilize in the classroom, the general ed classroom setting. So, they go in concert with each other, one builds skill level and comfort and confidence in the students, so that they can perform better in the general ed setting alongside their peers. But the goal is to have them with their non-disabled peers as much as possible.
And the idea being of, with their non-disabled peers, that's where they're working on their social goals, or things of that nature?
Correct. And there are also, though, they get to the point where they're learning their academics in the class, general ed classroom. So some of the students spend a very minimal amount of time in the CLC setting, and they're in the general ed setting more than they're not.
All right, thank you.
And that's the goal. You're welcome.
And if nothing else, now we'll move on to the checkmarks that have not been discussed yet. And I think, Mrs. Jacobson, you probably had something you wanted to ask about?
I do.
I do. Hi, is this on?
Hi.
Can you hear me? Yeah. I just had a question about the new model that we are rolling out in middle school, the device program in seventh grade and high school, social studies and science. I know you're not calling it-
Highlight the page, Support Management Follow.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, page three.
The fourth one now.
Yes, one, two, three, four.
Okay.
Four. So, in the, I just have a few quick questions on it. In the middle school, is that going to be all subjects?
That will be, yes, that will be an all subjects.
Okay, and for middle school, as we envision this change to instruction using more technology, can you, do we have an idea of the percentage of time that instruction will be done utilizing the device during the day?
No, we haven't, we haven't established that yet. One of the things that we've set as a goal is to determine a kind of minimum set of expectations for our staff going forward. We have staff, you know, currently right now who are using it extensively.
Right.
But, we also are conscious of the fact that we don't want to lose sight of, we don't want students behind their screens. So we've got to find the right balance of that work, and I think that, quite honestly, that'll be an ongoing conversation.
Okay, so this is in a personalized learning program where they're learning on the device all day, basically, right? That's not what we're doing.
Right, yes, thank you for that distinction, it is not.
Okay, we're not doing that, okay. And in the high school, the same thing, social studies and science, is that all social studies and science throughout all levels, AP, whatever it may be?
It'll be assigned to those classrooms.
Okay, and again, the same question, it's not a personalized learning program in those either, they are still being instructed by teacher, and this is just a tool of the curriculum, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and have the sixth graders been informed of this change at this point yet, or will they be at some point?
We even, we've worked to inform our staff, we haven't directly communicated yet with the students. I do understand they've heard, but we've not directly-
Well, yes, because a parent told me about it already last weekend, so, sixth grade, but will official information session, a communication, a policy, or anything like that, it will be forthcoming around this before it actually rolls out?
Absolutely, one of the things that we are considering is how do we go forward, particularly around the areas of digital citizenship for our students at all levels? We have to look at potentially issues, raise some of the concerns around parents, information sessions for our parents as well. This is just, devices or not, this is certainly the world they live in, and we have to be more conscientious about promoting the right uses of all devices and, and technology.
Okay, and I think, what else do they have? So, just as we roll out science in high school and then down from there, since science is going to be on this program, are we still getting a science textbook?
Yes, we are, we are certainly looking at science textbooks. I will tell you that as of, recently as a materials fair that was held earlier this fall up at CES in Trumbull, neither Mr. Wakeman or Ms. Vigella, who are, lead our science programs at the elementary and secondary respectively, found an awful lot of print materials yet ready for adoption. So we are considering other types of sources that, to take advantage of, because we just don't think that, at least at this moment, the print materials are in place to support the new standards. We'll have an update on that when we present the new curriculum later in the spring.
So the state adopted new standards with that material to teach them with?
That unfortunately happens frequently.
Right, thank you. Okay, I think that, that was, for now, all my questions on that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that the end of your question?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Pitko.
Just a follow-up to the technology, are we going to be offering PD, professional development, to the teachers who now are going to have these devices in their classrooms?
Absolutely, if, we have, we know that if we don't do that, we have a failed program. We have to absolutely support our teachers in the development of this, in the use of these devices.
Thank you.
Any other que, Ms. Maxon, Connolly?
Um, just very briefly, I'll, I'll admit that the whole intro, I spent so much time trying to find where you were on the page, so I'll be going back to the video to listen to this again.
Yeah, my apologies for that.
No, no, that's our, I'm sure it was crystal clear to you, you were talking about technology bit, I was just, kept looking for the phrase 21st century. And, I have to admit that I'm with this, because my understanding from the questions I submitted is that this comes with approximately, just over a $600,000 financial commitment. So I think I'm going to be looking for just a fuller explanation of exactly what it is that we are rolling out. I mean, as I said, I think part of my question that I can't give it to you right now is because you lost me in the beginning, which I put on me, but-
Generous of you.
So, trying. So I, I will, just a heads up that I'll be giving you some, some questions about that, because I would, I, I think it sounds very intriguing, it certainly is what districts around us are doing, but I'll just want a fuller explanation of that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on pages three through five? Pages three through five, I have one less, one left, one hand left. Mrs. Vitale.
This is for Mr. Mancoosho. For implement staffing models to assist with pre-K through 12 case loads in special education, can you just speak to that a little bit? Is that just for special ed teachers, is that for speech and language pathologists also? Is there anything still working on it?
I was, I was going to get to those, because there's another one too that I want to get to. That's a good question, and it's one that has, you know, I've heard about since I've arrived in the district. I had the pleasure of collaborating with 20 of our, our special ed staff and related services staff throughout the district to collect some preliminary data regarding caseloads, primarily with a focus on special education teacher caseloads for other districts in our DURG, DURG B, as well as districts in DURG A. There was many, and there were some questions on, on this, and that I think Mrs. Maxon, Connolly, and Mrs. Gerber had, had sent regarding an efficiency study that was done in the spring. A lot of that was around, you know, caseloads and service hours, and just general consistency of program implementation across schools. We've since contracted with an organization who's going to be reaching out to the board for board input as well as parent input, they're going to want to meet with SEPTA, they're going to want to meet with our staff, obviously, to take a look at how we deliver services. I think programming, we're pretty solid in Fairfield, and we're proposing adding some high-quality programs. I think the consistency of service implementation and the delivery of those services from school to school is worth taking a deep look at, so we can ensure consistency across the district. That study will hopefully be completed in May. We've had our first meeting with, with our contracted service provider, they're going to really look at IEPs to see how we write our IEPs, how we staff students, and then we're going to be coming back to the board with, with that information. The board, again, will be part of providing input on what the board is really looking for in terms of special education in the district.
I think you're getting close to your 10 minutes, go ahead.
I'm just going to, fair warning, I am going to put it in my next series of questions, pigging back on what Mrs. Vitale said, looking at the caseload of the speech language pathologists, if we could do that for this budget season, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mrs. Maxon, Connolly.
Just to clarify, the question that I had submitted, and for the new board members, the conversation that I, that I, what I had submitted was regarding a May conversation, so I'm not sure what the spring audit is exactly that is being referenced here, because it was-
Did I misinterpret something, or?
I, I understand exactly what you're asking, and in the spring, when we talked about actually doing what we're doing now, but we chose not to go ahead and start that once we knew we had a special education director change, instead of doing that in the summer with me, I felt like we needed the new director. So what we talked about in the spring is happening right now, instead of happening in, in July, August, September, when we didn't really have a director until it's time for school to start. What we did in the spring was just gathering data, and early in the, in the year.
Okay, then to follow up that through the chair to Dr. Jones, at that ti, in May, we had been talking about an allocation of funds, and we thought it could do it internally. I was wondering there, where did the funds come from then for us to, I'm thrilled that it's being done, but how did that get handled this year?
Yeah, and I would actually refer that to Ms. Munsel, because I, I can't remember which line item we actually used, you may know as well, Mr. Mancoosho, which line item we used.
I was going to defer. I will say, it's cost, to get the independent review done, it's $38,500 to be paid over two fiscal years, so this year it's $18,500, and then we budgeted $20,000 for, for the 18, 19 school year. If Ms. Munsel could just advise on where that is.
We, we maintain a budget for consulting services, it's not identified for specific services in a given year, but in, generally, we know that we have to hire consultants from time to time, so there's a line item that allows the superintendent to do so.
Thank you.
Anything else on pages three to five? Seeing, and I have only one question, we are frequently asked, how much are we spending to implement the district improvement plan? So I wonder if you might put that in your list of things to answer for next Tuesday? And frequently, the answer is, we have reallocated resources, and that's one amount, it's not new money, we're not asking for new money for that, and then what amount is, quote, "new money" that is increasing the budget request as a result of that? And so if you looked at these items on pages three through five, it might be good if I had a number that said, when somebody on the Board of Finance says, well, what's the, what are these pages costing us? We would have an answer.
To Mr. Dwyer, I actually asked that exact question, but I, I only got the answers for page three, but, so on the, our booklet of questions on page nine, that was already detailed, not for four and five, but page three is on there.
And I'm not interested in going page by page, what's it cost us to implement these ideas? Page three through five is my question. If there are no other questions, that's item A and B, we'll move on to C, which is review section instructional services, page 33. I'm sorry, did you have any wrap-up comments that you wanted to make?
Yeah, I, I did have-
At the risk of exposing yourself to more questions.
There was one more initiative that I'd like to, to bring to the board's attention.
Which page?
It's page five, the last item on the page, implement a high-quality student support, no, excuse me. I'm sorry, it's the second to last item, implement a high-quality intensive support program at the high school. I, I think the board has been informed that this probably has been the number one item that our staff is so invested in. You know, coming to Fairfield, I was immediately impressed with the dedication and the commitment of our staff to our students and our families, and the desire to work with our most at-risk high school students with social and emotional needs. We're proposing that we develop an in-house program to replace the program currently in place that is operated by Effective School Solutions. We're proposing that we hire five, you know, mental health professionals or social workers who would be interviewed by our staff and our parents to make sure that we select the highest quality candidates to replace ESS staff to meet the needs of our students. As part of the proposal, we're also looking to contract with, you know, and this is really exciting for us, contract with Yale Child Study Center psychiatric staff and psychological staff to consult with, with us and with families regarding meeting the, you know, the mental health needs of our students. We're also looking to contract with an expert in the field of strengthening students' executive functioning skills, so we can support them in the learning centers at the high school to promote academic growth along with the social emotional growth that we'll be working on. And this would, we would program for our students for, for the summer as well, not all summer, but we would have an extended school year for students who require that level of support. And then we would continue our consultation with cognitive and behavioral consultants from Manhattan and Westchester to do our DBT training, and, you know, that would, that is available to all students who require that level of support, but that would continue for students who are currently in this intensive program. Thank you.
Any questions on Mr. Mancoosho's final comment? Mrs. Gerber, followed by Mrs. Maxon, Connolly.
Just for the board, a lot of what you just said is in writing on page nine in the Q and A that we got, so just if you didn't get everything, it was pretty much, but yeah, no, it's very thorough, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Maxon, Connolly.
In what way do you see this as being an improvement on what ESS was able to offer?
I'm going to call Ms. Gail Donowitz up to answer that question. Gail Donowitz is the principal of Walter Fitzgerald campus.
I'm Special Ed Coordinator, good evening. So, good question in terms of ESS, I think we, we had expected that the Effective School Solutions would do one primary thing, which would be reduce out-of-district placement, students being able to be maintained in district. We were not able to meet the standard that was, that had been set. We also are looking for strengthening skills in executive functioning through a variety of things, including professional development that will be provided for our teachers, both general education and special education. I think what we're looking at now is building the capacity to address our individual students' needs at a much deeper and higher level, rather than having a contracted service that really doesn't understand what, what our students need, to the degree that we would like that to happen.
Okay, so it, for the students who were here, there was an overall evaluation that it was failing to meet their social emotional needs?
No, there was an overall evaluation that it was failing to meet the standard of bringing students back and keeping them in district at the rate that we were expecting that to happen.
Okay, because obviously that was a topic that we kept asking about, you know, what was making this a worthwhile program, and it was very much targeted at the, keeping the outplacement number from going up.
Correct.
So, is it possible to have, and if it's in here, obviously there's a lot of text I haven't had a chance to go through, but can we have a side-by-side comparison of, here's what ESS costs, and here's what it's going to be to have our own social workers, including benefits, including any other staff, including whatever we're, whatever is costing anything in all of this that I haven't had the chance to read yet?
Yes, we can provide that, but we also can provide how, not only will we be doing what it was that ESS was doing, but we will be doing much more in terms of the collaboration and the level of expertise, but yes, the answer is yes.
Sounds excellent, I look forward to that, thank you.
You're welcome.
I will have that side-by-side comparison for you for next week, if that's okay?
Again, it would be always helpful to show what is reallocation of existing resources we have in ESS's contract versus whether it's costing us more or less.
I already wrote myself a note to that, thank you.
Anything else on pages three to five? Mrs. Vitale.
Just a clarification on the DBT, would the professional development be for just special ed teachers, or do you see it being for general ed teachers as well?
I'm going to call our high school coordinator up, Michael DiStefano, because this also relates to initiative to roll out DBT at the middle school for next year.
Hi, I'm Michael DiStefano, I'm the high school special education coordinator.
Could you just repeat that question, Mrs. Vitale?
Just for the DBT, in terms of PD for staff, is it just for special education teachers, or do you foresee general ed also getting this professional development?
Sure, so we already have rolled out this DBT training throughout this school year, we actually have done a series of trainings that started actually the first week of school. So we've done with all of our psychologists, social workers, school counselors of K, pre-K through 21, we've done that training with them. They've had four intense days of DBT training with DBT, with CBC consultants out of Manhattan. However, at the high school and middle school level, we also already had a full day, actually, I shouldn't say a full day, it was actually a half-day training with Dr. Alec, Alec Miller, who's the head of the CBC program, and he's a guru in, in- a guru in DBT, rolling out with adolescents. And they've actually done a half-day training with all of our staff, grade six through 21, on the first week of the school year.
Are you saying 12?
I'm sorry?
Up to age 21.
Up to age 21, yes. So the community partnership program, the high schools and the middle school, all of their staff have already had a half-day training with Dr. Miller. And, you know, just to throw it out there, and Dr. Jones could verify some of this, we've actually, when we did that, that was like really the biggest piece. When we did that training with the regular ed staff, we had many staff members reach out to us that this is what we've been waiting for. They sent emails to myself, Dr. Jones, saying that this is something we really think could help our students and help, you know, everybody. And that's why we roll it out with the regular ed staff.
That was really just the point, that this type of training for staff will benefit all students in our district, not just those who may have an IP.
And we really see, as we build the capacity of our own staff, and now that we have these experts who, you know, have really had this, you know, high school experience and have these, now have these DBT skills, they can begin in their ways at the high school level and their advisories, or in their different programs, rolling out different pieces of DBT. Maybe it's not, you know, a therapeutic approach, but maybe it's just the pieces and little skills of DBT within their classrooms, teachers with the support of support staff.
Thank you.
Going around the table one more time. Okay, pages three through five. I want to thank the board for spending this much time on just three pages. This board put a lot of effort into the district improvement plan, and so it's good that the board has kind of dug into these particular changes. Seeing none, let's move on to item C, which is instructional services on page 33, with the page 32 being the narrative descriptions of the account numbers. Right now, we're going in to just start with Q&amp;A, not presentation. So, questions from board members on page 33. Mr. Peterson, followed by Ms. Pitko.
I'm not sure if this is to the superintendent, through the chair. I was wondering if you could give me some more color on the fairly large increase in the program assessment line. That's actually on page 72, under instructional services. I mean, I imagine a lot of this stuff is related back to the ELL Academy, Newcomer Academy. If there's any more color you can give us on that, that would be great. It's right here. 29,000.
Program assessment.
Program assessment.
Sorry, I'm still trying to find it.
So page 72, 60 instructional services, 52091, program assessment. Because I, you know, I understand the general gist of the large increase for curriculum development, but I didn't know, give me more color on the program assessment part.
Oh, I just don't find it. Did you find it, Mr. Cummings? Yeah, feel free to go ahead if you have the detail.
Okay. So included in that line item, and I'm just going to try to pull up, what I believe is the increase. Excuse me, one second. I just want to make sure I've got this for you. This all looks like, maybe just increases, well, one of them would be program increased costs. That category includes the STAR assessment, which we give in grade, in the elementary, middle, and high school grades on reading and math. It includes, excuse me, accelerated math, which is an existing program. It includes funding for the PSAT at the high school level for grades, I believe we put that in this year for grades 10 and 11.
Yeah.
Oh, excuse me. One of the increased costs would be that we added it potentially for grade nine this year. So it's included for grade nine, 10, and 11. It includes the computer information assessment at the high school level, the 360 Universal Screener, which is a behavioral assessment we use in the high schools currently, and then the elementary, excuse me, the World Language Program Assessment, which is part of the district improvement plan. And there's three different world language assessments based on the language, and then the postgraduate survey for the district improvement plan. So those are all existing. I believe that the cost increase, therefore, is related to material, just, I know that the STAR assessment, for example, went up.
So on pages 71 with one-line items small, it's mostly on page 72. And if you look at that column all the way over to the right, the net of the minus 1,200, 1,500, the plus of 1,52, minus 50 adds up to the 100,000. Okay? And so it seems like the biggest amount is curriculum development, that had a very small line item in the prior year, and a large line item now. Am I reading that correctly?
That is correct. I can speak to that increase too, if you wish. Okay.
It's the largest piece, and I think you were saying, what's driving that?
Well, I was, I would, my general assumption was a large part of that was related to the Newcomer Academy. But if it's not, then...
Yeah. The question that I responded to was specifically the line item on program assessment. Excuse me, immediately beneath that is the curriculum development line. So yes, we've reduced that line over the last couple of years, and this year, we worked to, identified some needs around that that required an increase. So specifically, there is EL program, Newcomer Academy, funding in that line item for work that would have to go on this summer. One of the pieces of work we're doing this year is we're looking to identify at the K-12, across K-12, content standard, prioritize content standards across the four major disciplines, social studies, science, English, language arts, and math, in order to establish common sets of goals. We see this as fundamental work for, as we go forward in the district, to best build coherence around our instructional program, and think about how we can, as we look to integrate the academic expectations into our classroom lives, how we're going to build assessments to go across curricular areas and address students' proficiency on those academic expectations. This is in anticipation of the work that will be done, also in relation to the portrait of the graduate work. So it includes that. There's funding for, I have set aside money. One of the things that we've done in the past is, those of you on the board for a while know, we have limited our curriculum development to courses that have been under curriculum review. And at the back of your budget book, there's a curriculum review cycle, a timeline. One of the challenges to that previous methodology, there's actually two challenges to that previous methodology. One, because of some of the budget issues we faced over the last couple of years, that timeline has been stretched out. And so it puts at risk some of the courses that we've, or curricular areas that we've wanted to develop, particularly, I would say, in areas like technical education, which we'll learn more about at our February meeting, as well as business education, and some of the smaller departments at the high school level. The other challenge to that is the portrait of the graduate work. As we start to think about what we want to include as course requirements for our students, or credit requirements for our students, we may very well have to reimagine and redo some of the current courses we have, and we may need to add courses. So one of the things I did is I set aside $30,000 in the budget, without specifically aligning it to a curricular area or course, but to support, to make those decisions over the course of the spring, to decide what courses we would support for curriculum work this summer. A lot of that final determination will be based on what we decide to go forward in our graduation requirements and courses to fulfill the portrait of a graduate work. So essentially, what I'm saying is that that method that was put in place by Dr. Boyce to have course development happen when courses were reviewed, does not necessarily work right now because of those two reasons, and we have to look at that differently. There is money in that line to support the new STEAM initiative at the grade three, five level, money to support the inquiry instruction as well. And that's essentially the funding behind that increase.
Any questions, Mr. Peterson?
No, not on that. Thanks for asking.
Okay. Ms. Pitko, I think you had raised your hand, correct? And then Mrs. Gerber and Mrs. Jacobson.
Actually, submitted a bunch of questions. I'm just going to defer right now. I know you didn't get a chance to answer them. I sent them on Friday, and they're involved.
Okay, so thank you. Mrs. Gerber?
Well, I guess just to follow up on Mr. Peterson's question, I just, in looking at, and this goes back to the program assessment, so for instructional services, it says to support ELL instruction with e-learning tools, the identification of a pre-K through 12 curriculum progressions, integration of technology into classroom instruction. So is that also in that program assessment, or is that, is that part of, I just wanted to get a little clarification on that.
I didn't know. Apologies, Ms. Gerber.
I'm sorry. Page, it's, the description is on page 33.
Yep.
You know, in the yellow under instructional services. And then I was just going then to page 72, to that same instructional services line, just to see where, like, the technology part of it, like, the integration of technology into classroom instruction?
That would be in the instructional services, and primarily the curriculum. We're looking at integrating an e-learning tool for EL students as part of support services. One of the things that we're looking at around that is how to integrate it into EL instruction. But we're also looking at a tool that potentially can supply, provide services for students when they're not necessarily in direct EL instruction, but perhaps also help them at home.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mrs. Jacobson?
Hi. Also staying on the program assessment, I know that grade nine PSAT had been brought up a couple of years ago with, under Dr. Title, and it was something that we didn't move forward with, as grade nine being one of the only years not to be tested. And adding more assessment to our kids' lives wasn't a direction we wanted to go in. So I'm just curious what the rationale of building and funding for that is right now. And then, just as a follow-up, can you provide me with the cost for each one of those assessments, the behavioral, the STAR, the accelerated math, the PSAT, et cetera, that we actually spend? I mean, is that all, are all the assessments in that 175 for next year?
All, yeah, I won't do that. Do you want it now?
No, you don't need to break it out. I'm just, it's all adds up to the 175, right? That's the total sum?
Those, what's included in that line item is the, since the district levels of assessment?
Yeah.
Is kind of standardized?
Well, okay. So it's not the PSAT?
The PSAT is included in that.
It is.
I can give you that specific breakout. Well, let me actually, I'll talk to the grade nine. That absolutely still remains a concern, that issue around grade nine? I think that it's one of the questions that, as I've spoken to the headmasters at the high school, they've rightfully raised as a concern. It's also something that we, so we essentially put in at this point, but we've not, I would say, finalized the decision around this. We didn't want to lose funding for it. It's a $5,000 cost, $5,250 cost to do grade nine. The, excuse me, the 10th and 11th grade is more, it's $18,000. So we put it in to hold it, but I think we have, there's concerns around this we still have to resolve in terms of, well, I think in general, speaks to the amount of standardized testing we give kids in general.
Right. So I'm curious why we're thinking about adding it?
Well, because one of the things we're looking at is, we think about the measures in a sense of our portrait of a graduate, and how we might measure, say, for example, content knowledge, mastery-based learning. One of the measures we've talked about is using the current academic expectations. But we also have had some conversations about some type of standardized measure, the SAT, the PSAT. If we're going to move to something that would include the SAT, the PSAT sets up as the precursor benchmark that we could use to help inform instruction. It's something that we could offer possibilities around reteaching at the secondary level, including the SRBI model that we eventually put in place. But there's a lot of these big pieces that have not yet been finalized. And even though it's a relatively low cost in terms of our budget, what I don't want to do, given our budgeting is so tight, is try to, if we make a decision to go forward, try to find $5,000 later.
Right. So perhaps in ninth grade, doing something more of an authentic assessment pertaining to some of those changes that we might make in those areas, the four Cs, so to speak, might be a conversation to be had instead of something-
We are definitely going to be doing more type of authentic assessments everywhere.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli?
One of the few motions I've ever made with the budget in six years on the board involved striking $4,000, I think it was $900 for grade nine PSAT. And I was wondering, one of the things that we had talked about when that came up a couple of years ago was the very good use that the headmasters made of that PSAT testing day to do different things with the ninth graders. They had, and I think it was different between the two high schools, but they had a series of programs that they found to be worthwhile.
That's correct.
Has that continued? And is that anything that you or anyone in the audience could speak to?
Well, they're certainly welcome to come up. But I would say that in the conversation that we talked about, they did advocate for their current level of programming for ninth graders. They see it as a very, what they currently offer is sound for those students.
Okay, because again, if we make that change, I would really like to hear about the rationale for doing so, because I, I'm feeling I agree with Ms. Jacobson, this is not something I'd be overly fond of. Then, secondly, back to page 72, and I definitely think this is on myself for not understanding this line, but this is under 303, People Personnel Services, the consultation services, $500,000 increase. I, every, and again, I'm sure I'm misreading this, but I thought by losing ESS, that was, had been on the consultation line. Therefore, with that gone, I not only don't understand why it's not a decrease, but I certainly don't understand why it's an increase.
There's a couple of reasons.
Okay.
$510,000 is no longer, from excess costs that was applied to that line item, will no longer be applied to that line item. So we need to make up that $510,000. And minus the five staff members to replace the ESS, the increase in consultation services for the Riverfield CLCS, as well as the Tomlinson CLC, require us to increase that number.
So off the top of your head, do you, what was the ESS number?
The ESS number off the top of my head, without-
Do you know what the first, 450, 450. Okay. So with that out, we have a $950,000 ballpark increase between making up for the lack of funding from the state and the consultation needed at Riverfield and Tomlinson.
We're increasing consultation at Tomlinson. We're increasing two days per week of BCBA support through our contracted services.
Okay, that's an acronym you got me on.
I'm sorry, behavior, uh-
PCBA?
BCBA, Board Certified Behavior Analyst. I apologize.
Mr. Mancuso, if I may too, I think page three is going to be really important for the board to understand in the questions, and I know you didn't get them before the meeting. But the one area that I think will throw you a little bit, when you look at some of these categories, the text is really important in the executive summary, because you'll note where the excess cost was applied previously across all these different OT, PT. It was spread out in the budget. So now, we are applying it all to one category. So after we get through this year, it'll be so easy for people to understand what we're getting in excess costs and what that looks like. Getting through this year, it's really tricky, because you have to look at that number and understand there used to be excess cost applied. If you want to know the true cost, Ms. Munsell actually built this chart for us on page three. So it gives you, like, on the People Personnel Services that you're asking about, you can see where there's actually a decrease in the 2018-19 budget. That's the real number. If there's no excess cost involved last year or this year, you're seeing the real number. You can also see that on the tuition line, what's really happening to tuition. This is the real dollar amount. Then, when you get down below that, you can see what the gross costs are for special education, for the whole program. You're looking at what we expect to get in excess cost below that. And so if you follow that down, the top portion is where it's very different this year, because we've applied it all to tuition. So it's in one area of the budget. And so you've got to, you have to be able to account for that. So there's-
So I have some reading to do.
Yeah. If you read the text on those executive summary, they're very important, because it actually says exactly how much was excess cost. And then if you have the question, did that really go up or did it go down? Because it, it is complex, because it was across the budget in many different areas. This sheet is really helpful to understand what is the real cost of special education, not how much we're going to get back in, and somebody said today, as in credit, when you think about excess costs. What is the true cost? And this is it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That is an excellent point. Thank you for bringing that up. Instead of spreading the three point eight mailing, million, next year we're projecting excess cost reimbursement back at three point nine eight six million. We're going to apply that all to tuition. It's so much easier to be able to track the figure than to look in all the, there was like six or seven different accounts that the three point eight million was split across. So that's why in that account where you're asking, there's five hundred and ten thousand that was withdrawn from that and applied to tuition.
Okay. But we will always see the, and again, I recognize I have to read this all again. And I did read all of the executive summaries. But we will always see an actual cost. And then anything that's excess cost, I'd always thought would simply be reported in income. And there's nothing about these numbers that are a, okay, you had this cost, but then it got reduced by this. It'll be a pure cost number.
You'll see an actual cost, and then you'll see an excess cost amount that is applied to that actual cost to reduce that.
Right. But we will see a pure number of this program costs this before we receive a penny.
It will be much clearer now than what it used to be. Yes.
Okay.
If you look on the bottom of this sheet, too, it's real helpful, down on the very bottom where it says excess cost. And you can see it used to be people personnel services, other services, student transportation, tuition. And it shows you those four categories and how it was split. If you're looking at last year's number, when you look at this year's number, you're going to see the true cost for those first three, and then you're going to see excess cost applied, all to tuition. So it'll be much easier to see. Okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
But to further drag this out, and maybe through the superintendent, Ms. Mansell, in the past, we have applied state funding to an expense line and reported the net as part of our budget. So we have not seen the actual cost of that unless we were to take the income line for that item, add it to the expense line, and the operating budget, the total of two creates it. But we have not in the past seen that. I think Mrs. Maxon Cannelly was asking, now that we're doing it differently, will we see it in this budget document?
We will handle it the same way in that when, we will still see a net cost in tuition. But the, the answer to that growth, the gross cost is very easy to see, because it'll be in one line in tuition.
So you won't, you won't find the number in here, but you will find two numbers. Add the amount that we're getting from the state in excess cost to the line item for tuition, the total of the two is the tuition cost. Is that, did I say that correctly?
No. Subtract, subtract.
Fair enough. Did I say that correctly?
Say it again.
The item in revenue for excess cost and the net expense in out, in outplacement, is it subtract one from the other or add the two together?
You add the two together. That's our total.
Add the two together. That's the total cost for tuition.
Okay.
I've said, I've said that correctly? Thank you.
I have to say, when Mr. Mancusi asked the question, why we did this, and he asked if I would be liable to, to making this change, he made my day.
Any other questions on Mrs. Maxon Cannelly's inquiry?
I just want to get clarification on it. So the budget number for tuition is less, the excess cost is subtracted from that number?
Correct.
Right. So...
You add the excess cost back in.
To get the actual number of tuition.
Correct.
So if you're looking at it, the tuition number may seem deflated from what it actually is on first glance.
Correct.
And just for past practice, was it split up between the different accounts based on that's where the excess cost was, you know, for OT, PT, based on the students who, whose, you know, expense was in excess of?
I'm not sure, because it changed. I think it was, the answer to that was one of those, because they've always done it that way.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And I suspect that you got the number from the special education department as to what to charge to what line item? Yeah. Any other questions on page thirty-three? Any other questions on page thirty-three? Mrs. Jacobson?
Are we just doing instructional services or people?
Anything on page thirty-three?
Okay. Student activity expenses I wanted to get into for the reduction of seventeen thousand and eight dollars, basically. Can we talk about that reduction across middle school and high school, mostly at the middle school, too, level in terms of just they don't have that much money to begin with for their extracurricular activities? And it seems that the number is quite, going down quite low amongst our middle schools for our sports, our music, and our drama programs, which I think are highly valuable to our students. So I'm just curious about the rationale. Such a small number to this budget that could have such a big impact on our kids. So I'm just, would like to talk about that.
If I might direct you to page five, that's where you'll find the answer for that question, and it's right at the top.
Page five of the...
Of the answers. Thank you. There's no deduction, there's no deduction imposed by the district. This is one of those site-based budgeting. So each principal actually budgets for their school site in the way that they see fit. And I did give, we gave you an example here. If you look at, for instance, Woods Middle School, they were budgeted at six thousand seven hundred last year, but they only spent two thousand one hundred and seventy-nine. So the principals, when they were working with that twenty percent, they have all gone back into their budgets to look at, do we have some areas where maybe there was underspending? Maybe they had a, something that existed in the past and that staff member moved on, and there's nobody who wants to do that anymore. So that activity money was there. And again, the principals have made those adjustments. And at our middle schools, you'll notice they all had some line item adjustments. And along with that, there's another question in the packet, and I may be able to find it here in just a little bit. But there's some examples, oh, actually, it starts on page five, where we give you examples of what the principals have said, whether they made those reductions. And that is along with that. That's just one of those categories where the principal decided they either had more funding than they needed in that area and they could use it best somewhere else.
Okay. So, and the held in reserve numbers in this area?
And what?
Two thousand seventeen, eighteen, two thousand seventeen, for this year, the money in the student activity lines that are held in reserve?
Yep.
So, for example...
If you'll give a page number.
Yeah, sure. I'm on ninety-four and ninety-five.
Okay.
Okay. So Tomlinson, three thousand held in reserve for this year. So the estimated expense for this year, Tomlinson, is thirty-seven hundred, and that's what we go to for the proposed for next year. So what happened to the three thousand dollars?
Except Tomlinson.
Well, Woods, I mean, sorry. Is that just being held, though? Is that, that's still just being held, right?
Is that Fairfield Woods?
Yeah, Fairfield Woods, sports.
Four oh nine, student activity expenses?
Right.
We would have to actually ask the principal why that, that item in particular was, was put in reserve or frozen. And I would imagine, based on the budget this year, because that line item was reduced, that was an area that they knew they weren't going to either have a club or something wasn't going to exist this year.
Okay.
It was ten percent of all, of all the allocations were held.
Well, this one is, this one's greater than that. I'm looking at like the sports costs. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
It was six thousand seven hundred, and there's actually three thousand that's in reserve. And I think it had, just has to do with, in their building. That's site-specific. And you don't see that below.
So basically, the, the reductions are based on a part of the twenty percent reduction, but really it was just how some administrators chose to do?
Not in that reserve. Are you, if you're asking about that reserve question, that is money that was in the budget for the school year, that was, was part of that two point three million that we have basically just frozen to deal with the unanticipated, not knowing what was happening. The intent is, every bit of that two point three million needs to be spent. We need that, we need to spend it, once we know exactly where we stand. So that's a different question than understanding where, going into eighteen nineteen, they may have reduced that item simply because it was a principal choice.
Right. So that, we don't know that the money that's in reserve for those line items will actually go to those line items. Right. They might be, because we might need to spend it on something else, right?
When we get to, yes, we get through the spring, and we know more about where we actually stand this year, we'll understand that two point three million a little bit better. We need, we need to know, that money right now is on reserve. What else is coming? What other reductions are going to come this spring that we haven't even anticipated from Hartford?
Can we provide these to the audience?
Okay. Pardon me? Oh, that wasn't for me.
Ms. Pitko asked if this document was provided in the back table. And yes, there are some copies of this, but this will be posted to our website tomorrow morning.
Quick follow-up?
Maxon Cannelly?
May I have a quick follow-up on that? Just, just for public information, maybe as part of superintendent's report, if, because I like to wear my rose-colored glasses, if something is going well with the budget this spring, and you're finding, you know, line items here and there that you're unfreezing, I'd just like to put out there specific, and I don't care if it's a five hundred dollar item. I would love to hear about, okay, we were finally able to do, all right, maybe if it's a ream of paper, fine. But anything that was, you know, something more substantial to the program, I'd just like to put out there that I would definitely like to hear that we were able to do that.
Absolutely.
Anything else on page thirty-three? Anything else on page thirty-three? Seeing no hands go up. On to page forty-one. Supplies, texts, and materials. Questions on page forty-one. Questions on page forty-one related to supplies, texts, and materials. Mr. Peterson?
I think this relates. I'm sorry, I'm, my newbie skills are weak here, going back and forth. I'm actually looking at, at copying expenses. Printing and copying, section three twenty-seven?
What page number?
Uh, page eighty-six.
Yeah, okay. So if, if you're asking questions that actually emanate from the detail related to this, it would be helpful to point that out.
Sure, that's fine. Actually, I'm sorry, this, this relates to stuff on page thirty-nine, so I can hold that.
You'll hold it.
For later.
Okay. Page forty-one. Page forty-one. Mrs. Jacobson?
Sure, yeah. So I'm looking at the supplies, books, and materials line item. That is decreased by three hundred and twenty-three, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. And if we go into the detail page of all of that, which...
It's being decreased, right?
Decreased, yep. If we go to the details page, it starts on page eighty-seven. I'll just let everyone flip to that page. It's the school-by-school list on that. So I just had a question, because some of our grades, or in some of these schools, like, for example, science and social studies, and sometimes kindergarten, are actually being allocated zero supplies, books, and materials for next year, and some of them for multiple years. So kindergarten, for example, at Holland Hill, doesn't need any supplies next year?
Yeah. When you, when you're looking at this section, this is totally site-based budgeting. And every principal or headmaster budgets their buildings differently. So, you know, you can find, and I'll just give an example. You may have, as an elementary principal, somebody who runs a central supply closet, and a lot of materials and supplies are, you know, available from the central office. Then you can have another principal who really does an allocation for each teacher.
Right.
X amount, and then they can go and buy what they want. So when you're looking at these items on here, it's, these, that's why they look so different. They're, it's totally site-based budgeting.
Okay. So Holland Hill kindergarten teachers will not have zero supplies if they need them. So that's not necessarily what that's saying, right? So there's just, it's a very large number and reduction of supplies and materials per school. So I just wanted to understand if, I understand that it's site-based, and that the administrators are saying that, that they don't need the supplies and making these reductions. But I just wanted to confirm, and that my concern is, is that it's a lot of material supplies and texts that we're taking from each of our buildings. So that if there was any impact on the, if the administrators or any principals can speak to that, that, that these reductions at their schools aren't going to have any effect on having what they need and delivering what they need with these reduced amounts. That's just, I just want a clarification, that we're comfortable with these amounts being reduced in this line item, which is three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah. And if you actually look on page six and seven of the, the answers and questions, there are just some snippets from each one of the principals that we were working on these today.
I just got it. Sorry.
Yeah. I'm just, I'll just point that out, just so that you can read on how each building approached what, how they were going to do these reductions. And certainly, you know, I think if the board were restoring funding, and you want to give everybody more money, they can, we would always say yes to that. But can I say that this is having deep, deep impacts on something? I don't believe that it is, or we wouldn't have put it in the budget.
Okay. It's just when you look at zeros, like, it just comes, so, and understanding that it might be done a different way is very helpful. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on page forty-one? I see no hands up. You're getting close to your ten minutes, too.
I took a little break, so, just like a refresh.
Ms. Leeper.
I guess I just want to reiterate what Mrs. Jacobson is saying. And I worry that this may in the future become some sort of expectation, that staff gets used to receiving nothing for, for supplies and materials. And I think we all are familiar with the concept that, like, once something is cut, it's sort of hard to get it back. And some of these things, it's been multiple years of zeros. So like Holland Hill's social studies, I think back to sixteen, seventeen, had zeros. So it's just hard to imagine how, year over year, for social studies, for an entire elementary school, you don't need a cent for supplies and materials. And I worry, I guess, that if staff are motivated to find twenty percent savings, this is an easy place to find it.
Yes.
And, and teachers are supplementing it on their own.
I think, just, just to clarify on some of this, one of the, first of all, I, I appreciate the concerns, because I think it's a concern we all share. It's one of the conversations that, multiple conversations that we've had between central office and the buildings, not only with the administrators, but some of the lead teachers. But a couple points I just want to put out. I think things have to be, some of these have to be placed in context. And this isn't an answer to every potential there. But, so if you take something like social studies, in sixteen, seventeen, we were discouraging any new spending, because we were implementing a new curriculum. This year, the new curriculum funding for social studies in the elementary was, was paid for by the district, because it was a new program initiative. When you look at something like zero dollars in kindergarten, there is money being spent at the district level to support classroom libraries in all of our elementary classrooms. There's also money that would be spent through the language arts or the math departments at each of the elementary schools that would further support that. So it's, it's difficult sometimes in the budget, as try as we might to follow the straight line of where the, where the money is purchased and where the actual materials may wind up, depending on who's actually doing the purchasing. Having said that, we'd be happy to, you know, examine the details of any questions you might specifically have. But I, we can always provide the context for some of these decisions.
Well, and I, and I might just add, too, I think on that piece, that when you look at each one of these elementaries, you know, not everybody has kindergarten. You don't see first grade, second grade, third grade. Again, it goes back to site-based budgeting. So it doesn't mean kindergarten's not getting money. They're probably in one of the core areas, the math, the music, and the principals targeting all grade levels for math, or all grade levels for their social studies materials.
Ms. Fattali?
I was going to take you back on to the question.
Okay. Ms. Pitko?
Mr. Cummings, thank you. I appreciate that sentiment. I understand it. I guess what's alarming is when you look at Sherman, and we all know the size of Sherman, and they're down eleven thousand dollars across the board. I would just like a better breakdown of why. Why in every single item, except for science, there's less money? Well, we know there's not less students.
So, so perhaps the, correct me, perhaps the question is, what isn't being purchased because of the reduction on that line? because of the reduction on that line item? Or is it that we have sufficient supplies from prior years, and that's why we were comfortable with it? Is that more or less where you're heading?
Thank you.
Ms. Vitale?
And that was sort of the question that I first asked for my question that I sent in, which I would just like to say that I sent in, I think, like, the night that we got the budget, or the very first, you know, the next morning. So when I said I didn't delve into it, it's because we had just gotten it. I just, you know, got to cover myself a little bit here. A 20% reduction to the schools, I mean, it is a cut. So let's not pretend that it doesn't hurt and something is not being cut. It's being cut, I mean, we can go through for the high school. I appreciate that tough decisions need to be made, but I would like honest answers from the principals and the headmasters of where these cuts are coming. We talk about getting creative. If this board can't finance it, we have a lot of other organizations in town that do provide funding, and I think that we just need to be kind of honest about the challenges that we face to possibly find other ways of providing the resources that our teachers need and our students need. Thank you.
One of the comments I made at the very beginning, and I'll get to you, Mr. Asin, was, next Tuesday, if you have an idea of something that you'd like to add to the budget, the debate always comes, do you not want to go above 3.1? So if you're going to add something to the budget, you need to propose where you can find the money, or are you proposing, no, we'll go to 315, or whatever the number is, because we want to add this as an expense? So give the board guidance on that question.
Just to follow up on what you just said.
Ms. Asin, you want?
Very quick.
Mrs. Gerber?
Well, I do think one thing that's important to remember, though, is that we're here because, at least if my understanding's correct, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, that this, all of this 20% is going to fund the next-generation science materials. So we've, a decision has already been made, you know, that these cuts are going to take place to pay for these science materials. That's basically how we ended up here. Correct? So basically, to say, so we, a decision was made before the Board of Ed got this budget, that, to go in that direction, so.
I would say two things. The proposal has been made. It's not a decision until the board votes the budget.
Well, the decision was made in the budget that has been presented to the board.
Correct. It's a proposed budget from the superintendent, and I personally think it's very hard to allocate, well, we spent more money here, and it came specifically from this line item. There are a variety of line items that have been reduced, and a variety of line items that have been increased, and so there is a definite shift. And you could say part of the lion's share of it came from the 20%, or it came from someplace else. Mr. Asin?
Forgive me if this is a bad question, but regarding the 20% that we're talking about, obviously, going back and forth here on the 20%, just to confirm, so line 400 on page 93, that's highlighted in orange, that 20% equates to the $323,000 in savings, correct? That's the only thing included in that 20% freeze on site-based spending? Page 93 in the-
Ms. Munsell, could you come forward to, if you're following that?
Do you want me to ask it again?
No.
Okay.
That's the sum total on the last column over, on the right, of all the various school reductions?
Yes, and my question is, does that equal the 20% that you're talking about, or is there anything else included in that 20%?
No, actually, on the first page of the responses that you got tonight, there's a chart there. And it's different, you'll see it's different for, by level, elementary, middle, and high school, what the allocation is and what each level has to fund with that allocation. So supplies, you'll see further down, are the office supplies, general supplies, nurse supplies, paper purchases, which is in general. There's other things, other accounts, other ways that they, funding that they need to consider when they're going to distribute their allocation, so it's not just supplies.
Okay, so it's, it, that 323 is not the number. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
And if you tried to do the math, 20% on to 108 is about 130, give or take. Same thing on each of the ones mentioned. That times the number of pupils at that school is the amount that they used to get versus now at 130 per pupil in middle school, the amount that they will get. It may be spread over various line items based on what the school principal wanted to do, but if you're looking for a total, am I correct, that's how the 20% is found?
The 20% was taken on the per pupil amount.
Yeah.
All right.
And so that 108 times the number of enrolled elementary school students that we expect for next year-
Correct.
-is the total allocation.
Correct.
If you multiplied that number times the 130, which was, if the 20% was never cut, that would have been the allocation.
Right.
Right? Mrs. Jacobson?
Just following up, do we know what the total 20% reduction, just across the board, was?
About half a million, about $500,000.
Half a million. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on page 41? Page 41. Mrs., Ms. Leeper, followed by Mrs. Jacobson?
This is a little more holistic, I guess, but you mentioned that it's not so straightforward, which I completely understand, and that a lot of materials will be under, like, the program line item, or, but when you look at those line items, those are all cut, too, except for science. So, and I'm super excited about science, I've been saying for a long time, I can't believe we don't have science every day in our elementary schools, to which people look at me like I'm living in, I don't know where. But, yeah, I guess I just also want to piggyback on what Mrs. Vitale just said, that I'd love honest answers from our principals about whether or not they can administer our educational program to be continuing to improve next year with this budget, and not just shifting money around to maintain the status quo in this crunch time, roll out new science standards, and everything else is sort of on a bit of a pause, because, like I said in the last, the last question I asked, a pause sets a new status quo of what's expected from this district going forward. And I'd hate for the new status quo to be pause mode. And not because of, because of the budget constraints we're putting on you, not because of a lack of time and effort and ingenuity and all the wonderful things you'd like to do, just because we're saying we're not going to give you the money to do all those wonderful things. So, and regrettably, I'm missing next week, which is why I'm taking a little latitude today to express some other thoughts, because before I decided to run for the Board of Education, we booked a vacation, and so I won't be able to ask all these other questions next week. So please forgive me for kind of dipping into some of the other, the other areas.
But you can submit them so that you'll get the answers.
Thank you.
And we'll email it to you, so while you're on vacation, you can read it.
I will happily do that.
Thank you, Will.
Mrs. Jacobson?
So, okay, page 93. Again, still under supplies, books, and materials, under the instructional services piece, where, as Ms. Leeper just mentioned, most of these items are being reduced, except for science. It's a very, you know, large reduction in this area. So what goes into instructional supplies and materials for gifted or health and PE that's not covered in the above section?
So, I'm-
So, 401.
That line item, 401, is actually being increased.
No, but-
In total.
Well, it's being increased, yes, but, see, I went, I did this a really different way. I did a three-year trajectory over it, so if you look, but it's being increased because of science, really, right? So there are really reductions in all of the other areas. The increase is primarily for science, correct?
Yes.
Right. So all of the other areas are being reduced to pay for the increase in science, generally speaking. So I'm just curious what goes into those materials under those items that are being reduced in here versus the ones that are above? Because it's some of the same areas, right? I mean-
I, I think if you go back and look at that 2016-17 line, it would be helpful, because you can see where the curriculum focus was. You know, we've invested, we invested a lot in math, we invested a lot in world language, we invested, you know, a lot in social studies. So what you're seeing, which is why that curriculum chart, you can't do everything every year.
Right.
That's why that curriculum chart is so important, that it's planned well, because something like science is very expensive for a district in comparison to, you know, other subjects, for instance. So you're seeing those are, are, you know, they don't need a lot of money, right, but because we've invested so much and we have a lot of materials already in our schools, now this is the year for science.
So it's a lot of curriculum development in these areas and materials to support that?
Where you see it go up is generally where we're focusing.
Right, and it, and this area specifically is around, in, in this supplies is around actual physical things to a large degree, whereas the program implementation budgets are more around curriculum and professional development.
And to remind, to tell the new board members, back in 1617 was the year that we first went into the Partnership 2.0. We saved $3.5 million roughly in insurance costs. We argued and advocated to the Board of Finance and RTM to allow us to keep that money and put it into, in one areas, this particular budget, because two years earlier, give or take, three years maybe, we changed the math curriculum, but we did not buy a textbook. We generally budget for one major textbook purchase in a subject each year, and you'll find that that money just shifts from one subject area to another, but it's still the same money. In this particular 1617 year, we budgeted for two major textbook purchases, social science and math. The Board of Finance, when they kind of accepted our argument and advocacy, some of the members of the Board of Finance hinted that, well, in future years, we assume this line item will come back to, quote, "normal," where you have one major textbook series purchased a year. At that time, we nodded our head, but that, some of the big fluctuation came from that historical- set of decisions. For those on the board, is there anything that I said that wasn't as your memory? Mrs. Max and Cannelli, thank you. Other questions on page 41? Mrs. Max and Cannelli?
Just one, and it, it's back on page 93, and it's, I'm reiterating the question I actually asked previously about supplies and materials, but I'm wondering if we can get anything more specific.
Again, the account number?
So this is on 401, the instructional services, and I'm looking specifically at the 2017-18 held in reserve column. And that, and because we needed to, that was a tremendous amount of money held in reserve, which very, to me, directly equates to, well, everything directly equates to something not purchased, but these are some instructional services or supplies not purchased, which we then have left out, I don't know if it's in hopes that some of this money would come back to us, or just we're going to have to make do without, and I was wondering if we could have some examples of what that represents.
Okay. Is that a question you want to get researched and-
If someone can answer it now, or researched, whichever staff is able to do.
If you prefer.
I think we best, we responded to that. We'll have to do some research for you.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Mrs. Max and Cannelli? Anybody else? Mrs. Vitale?
You mentioned earlier that this 600, that's for instructional supplies and materials, this is not textbooks for science, this is 617, 543.
Again, that's page 93.
That's page 93.
What line item?
It's-
Line number?
Science one. It's science, 56165, under 401. So we're not buying, we're not buying textbooks with this, the funding for next year for science does not include a textbook purchase.
Well, our intention is that we have to buy, we would like to buy a textbook for some of, at least some of the courses.
Is it fair to say it's budgeted if we approve the budget, but if they can't find a textbook that they think is worth investing $600,000 in, they'll come back and say, we prefer to do it a different way?
All right, that's really just my intent, is if, do you already know that you've done the research, it doesn't sound like there's a textbook out there right now?
That's correct.
And that this money is for other supplies to replace a textbook? I just want to know if this, we're going to budget for this, we're going to have supplies, and then in two years, we're going to want a science textbook later?
That could well happen, and we won't buy anything, though, that we, is not up to the standards we set.
Okay.
Mrs. Gerber?
And just to clarify, when we're talking about the textbooks, this 600,000 or so amount, that's just high school.
That's just high school.
Just nine through 12. But, and I guess, and I'm, I'm not that well-versed in the whole art of textbook selection, but would there be a chance that there might be a really good biology textbook, but not a really good physics textbook? So this amount, so it might not be, we might not need the full 600, or have the, the books to use the full 600, but we might have 300, or 200, or 400, depending on the quality of, you know, if it's overall, they're just not ready yet, which it kind of sounded that way from what you said, but, you know, perhaps if a certain topic, a certain subject within the high school met that, you would put those in, but then the rest would have to wait until later on?
That's absolutely correct. And one of the things that we also have to do, we've, we've started to have conversation about, is, and I've seen this happen before in another district at a different grade level, but, but it was also, involved science, that we had to look at, you know, when you think about a traditional comprehensive textbook, we started to look at smaller, more finite texts that supported certain aspects of a biology curriculum or something, so that may be an option we look at, too, but we will only purchase and move forward on purchases on materials that support the learning objectives of, of the adopted curriculum.
And just to follow up on that, I, because I know the topic has come up, you know, especially with, you know, changes being made in science all the time, and, you know, how quickly does a science book become obsolete?
Absolutely.
Would there be any thought of doing something more electronic, online-type, you know, I, I mean, I think there are probably different schools of thought, I think some people really want to have that physical book, and really have an issue if there isn't a physical book, and I think for others, it's like, well, you're getting this book in a couple of years, it's really not going to be, you know, worthwhile. I mean, I don't know how that compares with, say, like, social studies, you know, but, you know, any of these topics where things are changing at a fairly rapid rate, you know, how quickly does a science textbook last, you know, in a meaningful way, you know, regarding the curriculum and regarding what's happening in the science world?
That's absolutely right. And we are actively pursuing the online, open-ended resource type of options, again, in pursuit of the right materials to support the instruction.
Sure, thank you.
And again, for the board, if it's a new textbook, not replacing worn-out textbooks with the same textbook series, but if it's a new textbook, this board has to approve such a purchase, and state law requires it to be approved on a six, at least six votes. And if it's going to be purchased over the summer, generally, you will get a recommendation of May or June to approve that textbook, so the, the answers to the questions that we've just asked are likely to be known in that time period.
And I'm sorry, one more textbook question? Sorry. So in terms of the whole textbook selection process, you know, in terms of, because it's always something that certain people are really interested in, is the parental involvement in terms of curriculum review and the textbook review, has there been anything kind of put in place with the assumption that you do, in fact, excuse me, find a, or a group of science textbooks that you would have, the, the timing, you know, to work out, because we're already in January.
Yep.
Excuse me, to have us be able to, sorry.
That's okay, I have water, do you?
Yeah, I have been drinking all night. Sorry, I'll stop talking, you can-
No, that's okay. Yes, we would, we would, we would make sure that the timelines were put in place. They might be accelerated, but we would put those in place. And we will be, you know, just as you mentioned, the curriculum, we do, we will include certainly the parental overview of our curriculum proposals as we bring those forward, before we bring those forward to the board as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions on page 41? Page 41. Uh, any other questions on page forty-one? Page forty-one. I've always believed that if a person is still coughing, that they're actually, you know, okay, fine. But if you're not, kind of raise your hand so that we can come to your, your aid. Um, no other questions on page forty-one? Seeing none, we are now on page thirty-nine. We just backed up a page, uh, where it's other purchased services. I remind board members, it's ten o'clock. Uh, it seems as though we have the energy to finish this by eleven, unless we spend a half an hour on each of the sections, and then we may not. So, just as a reminder. Questions on page thirty-nine? Mr. Peterson?
Hi. This is very quick, and this is what I was going at when we were talking about the other page before. Um, on page eighty-six, uh, in the line items for Ludlow High School and Ward High School, uh, copying, I thought this was a little, I thought this was a little odd, uh, that there were such large increases here. Uh, in the case of Ludlow, it's up twenty-seven percent year over year. In the case of Ward, it's up twenty-five percent year, year over year. I mean, I assume on a district basis, we're trying to go as paperless as possible, but I was, I was curious, those numbers stood out to me.
Ms. Mencel, I believe that's attributed to the new copiers?
Yes.
Yes. They have a new copier lease.
But if, if that's the case, you say in the, uh, the page that there is, uh, so there's a, on the executive summary page, you say there's a increase of eight point five percent. I assume that that's district-wide. But in your, what you're, are you saying that the, that those, some large portion of costs specifically for Ward and Ludlow? But that when you, when you average it out over the whole district, it's eight point five percent?
The actual, uh, the new lease is not district-wide, and that some of our machines were already in place. Ms. Mencel, do you have the detail behind that, um, on the lease? Or do we need to get that? We'll follow up with that. The lease is not the whole district? Part of our machines did not need replacing?
Right, right. So, yeah, I mean, if I can get the breakdown, that'd be fine.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Peterson?
No, not there. Thank you.
Anybody else has a question on page thirty-nine? Page thirty-nine, and Mrs. Max and Connolly, followed by Mrs. Jacobson?
Um, I, this was a question I submitted, and I did get an answer to it. Um, and this was regarding, on page eighty-four, the money, basically involving the world language program. Um, and that, uh, the question I had submitted involved the travel that we had been committing to a few years ago, um, looking into these other programs with their immersion programs with world language. And I understand that, um, for anyone who's not looking at this, you know, we're currently on hold with plans to expand world language into grades K through two, um, just working on our three through five. I was wondering if, if staff or, um, administration had any insight into what they're thinking for that? Because obviously, we had wanted to commit to this, um, and what they're thinking in terms of, are they just trying, thinking in terms of a far more robust three through five? Are we still hope, holding out hope for that K through two? Or what is the thinking on this now?
Um, I would say that we would still hold out hope for K two. I think one of the things that we did look at is, you know, if we, the level of expense, both with the FTE and potentially materials cost around that. Um, I think too, though, we framed some of this decision around, as you know, a very deliberate decision to hold off on the science and social studies, uh, curriculum invitation in K two, as we really improve our ELA, and a lot of the work we're doing in SRBI is focused on K two. So, um, in the interim, so I would say that that's still something we would like to pursue. We've not, you know, some, given up on that. Uh, but, but I think if, if you recall, one of the things that I had talked about around our world language program, kind of as an objective, uh, was the fact that we, we wanted to move the needle on the grade six incoming, incoming sixth graders' expectations. Um, so while we hold on K two, Ms. Frankel and her te, and her elementary teachers are doing that work, um, in three, five, to revise curriculum. So with the, the addition of grade three last year, um, we essentially built a new curriculum around that. Now the, now the work going forward is to, already start to work on alter grade four, but really thinking about what we can do in grade five that's going to be different. Um, uh, so that's the work that we've met around frequently, and, um, we continue to meet, and she is meeting, I would say, at least once a month, if not more, with those grade, uh, those elementary teachers to make those changes.
And, and if I may add to that, um, I think there's a real difference between language immersion and our K one-two. So I think being a K one-two program, we would really like to see that in the future. The language immersion program would be phenomenally expensive, so it would take, it would be a big commitment from the school board, especially if we were trying to do that at eleven elementary schools. And I'm not even sure that we could find the staff to actually teach it. Um, so there, a lot of discussion happened even last spring, just about, is that even a viable program that we could do here in eleven elementary schools? If we were going to create, for instance, for racial imbalance, like an intra-district magnet, then you could probably find the staff, and you'd have to invest in that one building to have a really strong immersion program. Um, but it takes a phenomenal amount of staff for that to work, to have that dual-language aspect.
Right. And, and the interesting part about that was, is that the direction from the board had been to bring it down to K.
Right.
Down to kindergarten. It was actually, as far as I know, generated from the staff to look at those New Jersey districts that had the immersion program. That wasn't even a direction that came from the board, um, just prior to your tenure. So, you know, that's why I was, you know, wondering, since that was staff-driven, you know, what are they thinking now? So, um, just as an aside.
It gave me heart palpitations, the idea that we needed to build that into the budget. Let me just put it that way.
I, I have no doubt that it did.
Yeah.
Um, no, and I, I completely understand, you can only tackle so many initiatives at a time. It was, that's why, as I said, my question had been more, what is the thinking on this at this point? Um, and then just one other note about world language. In the back of my head is still that, because I was, one of the things in that district improvement plan, if I had to pick one item that was a keen part of my focus more than anything else, it was the postgraduate survey. Um, and so I did actually look over entirely of the survey results that we got from Ward, that, um, Mrs. Brown was very kind to print off for me. Um, and one of the subject area, now granted, I am not going to say that this was a statistically valid number of responses, um, but one of the areas where, um, our graduates most pointed out, feeling that they needed more support, more work, um, I can't remember the language that was used, was in the world language department. Um, and so that's why I'm, you know, just as one point, you know, something I'm very interested in following, because that was one specific bit of feedback from our graduates I definitely recall in that Ward survey.
And, and I would add that not these nine members, but the board, uh, did ask our staff to put together a comprehensive K twelve world language program. They, that program was presented to us, uh, and said, we're going to phase it in over two or three years. And so this board is on record as wanting to do that. At the same time, this board is also on record of telling the new superintendent that if she has changes to the district improvement plan or to other operations, feel free to bring that forward so the board is aware of it. Uh, and so I do invite the superintendent, as the staff continue to mull through that, uh, and you're able to kind of clarify where you think you are headed in the next two or three years with world language, to make that a topic of superintendent's report.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, Mrs. Jacobson?
Uh, I'm going now. Thank you. Question?
Any other questions on page thirty-nine? Page thirty-nine. So before I go on to page thirty-seven, I find that our two high school headmasters have moved from their traditional perch, back row, and I'm wondering if you wanted to come forward and talk about something that we've skipped over and want to respond?
With the board's indulgence.
So.
Let me just get up.
So, uh, we had kind of, uh, page forty-one and thirty-nine. I forget when I saw you move forward, so I don't know which section you're here to talk about.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Dwyer. Greg Hatzis, Headmaster Ludlow High School, and David Ebling, Headmaster Fairfield Ward High School. We thought, you know, considering there were a number of questions regarding, um, some of the supplies and materials and other things that, that the board members suggested, that instead of going through the process of submitting those questions and having us spend time with our staff in, in writing up answers for you, that maybe we could address some of those now, if that's, if that's okay with you.
Feel free. I won't guarantee that the board won't still ask you.
Of course, of course.
Take your best shot.
Okay, you're on.
Let me, let me give you a little bit of an idea. You know, Dr. Jones talked a lot about site-based budgeting, and for us at the, uh, high schools, Greg and I work very closely, but it happens much the same with the departments. So we'll meet with each of the department liaisons, or coordinators, or directors of curriculum, to help them, uh, work on developing a budget that we can implement. So when we were, uh, given the per pupil allocation, which was a twenty percent reduction, that's what we started with. Not to say to them, you're getting a twenty percent cut, but help us to understand how you can contribute to that reduction. So it wasn't an automatic, this is what you had last year, we're going to take twenty percent off, this is what you get. But rather, build your budget by what you need, submit that, and then we'll help you to, help us get to a total number at the end. We can't, because it's done that way, I can't say to you, for example, that art will not have pottery next year, or that they're going to make less of, uh, photos in the photography class. Each student's going to be reduced to only three pictures a week. It, it doesn't really work that way. One of the reasons we can't tell you is, we don't know exactly what our course enrollment is in each one of those departments. And then more specifically, within each course, uh, each department, what each course enrollment will be. So how many sections of pottery we'll have versus how many sections of photography we might have. We only have a certain amount of FTE, so we can only run a certain number of courses in each department. So that's one of the factors. Um, another example of that, when we talked about it, for example, you'll see in our elective areas, uh, are particularly heavy with the allocation versus some of the other areas. Social studies, just material-wise, doesn't require as much as family and consumer science. So when we met with, for example, the baking and pastry teacher, and we talked about her per pupil allocation, not by a number, but by how she might contribute to that reduction, we gave the example, she was, uh, demonstrating, um, frosting techniques on the, on the top of cupcakes. And she'd do one that was a rose petal, and then she'd do one that was something else. And so rather than that, we said, well, what would happen if you did the demonstration on a piece of wax paper, showed it, scraped it off, stuffed it back in the bag, and did another one? So it's those kind of techniques that I think with a twenty percent reduction, they're going to start to realize they have, have to implement. Um, Greg and I sign every purchase order that goes out of our building. So, for instance, um, you know, and I don't mean to pick on family and consumer science, I'm just saying the things that come to mind tonight. But, um, you know, do we need a subscription to Fine Cooking, Bon Appetit, da-da-da, da-da-da-da, you know, or could we do with two of the magazines rather than five of them? So I think there's different ways that we can look to reduce the cost.
And, uh, you know, to, to maybe, um, spell that out a little bit more, as we discussed with some of the elective areas. I mean, as David said, those tend to be the most expensive, but when you compare it to one of the core areas, they also affect a smaller number of students. So as we tried to look at how the allocation would be distributed, you know, we also had to take that into account, that maybe there would be a larger cut in a particular area, but it would impact overall a fewer number of students. Um, I think the, in our conversations, as David spelled them out, I would say the general theme would be that there might be a little bit of reduction. I mean, look, I've been in this district fifteen years, and I can't tell you how many times I've heard different bodies throughout the town say, you know, our teachers need to do more with less, right? Well, at some point, you cannot do more with less. You know, you, you can, you can still be, uh, you know, have be, have fidelity to the curriculum, because that is what we are promising our children and our parents. This is what our students are going to learn, you know, how, both in content and skills. But there might be something like a reduction in the personalization, or the, um, the levels of enrichment that might happen. Um, in the family, continuing with the family consumer science theme, let's say, you know, at a, a certain time of year, if students have the choice of making, you know, three or four different types of meals, maybe that choice is down to two instead of three or four. So, you know, the, because that would equate in the number of supplies that they would be buying for that. Maybe there's a technique in art that they're not going to be able to do next year because it's a particularly expensive technique, comparatively speaking, to some of the other techniques. So, so again, those are some of the choices that, that we've, we've put on our, our departments to make, um, and we'll work with them any way we can to try to, to try to supplement, and take advantage of, you know, the Fairfield Foundation of Education, the PTA, which has been very generous with, um, you know, the teacher grants that they, that they promote, PTAC as well, you know. So, so we are aware of that, and we have active participation. Maybe that participation will increase.
We weren't expecting any questions, though.
No, I think I tried to warn you that... Ms. Pitco?
Gentlemen, thank you. As a teacher who spent thousands of dollars a year out of her own pocket to teach science, I'm fully aware what we're asking of our teachers. My question specifically to both of you is, the library media specialists seem to each be cut by ten thousand dollars roughly. Any idea what that means?
Yeah, you know, um, we, we value so much from our library media specialists is how much they work with our teachers, um, on various projects, uh, throughout, you know, the curriculum. But also, a lot of that money goes to purchasing, you know, the, the texts and online resources. You know, we have so many more, um, you know, you know, books through Overdrive, and, you know, accounts that we utilize, so, so students can access things online. What that cut will mean is that, you know, the, the breadth of their choices will be reduced. I mean, what we try, you know, just write books is still a philosophy we use at the high school, um, you know, where we want students to read at their instructional level and be challenged. Um, and we also want to provide a breadth of genres for students. So, you know, with a little bit, the fact that we move more to online means that money is spent more on those types of contracts that we, that we get, as opposed to the physical book, which might need to be replaced after two or three years of paperback. You know, it gets so much life out of it before it's unusable again. So instead of buying some of those more hard copy type of things that would need to be replaced over a number of years, by moving more digitally, we might be able to, to realize some of those savings. But at the same time, um, you know, there might be just a fewer number of offerings that they would, they would purchase.
So one follow-up question. With these reductions, will this have any impact on our NEAS?
Hard to say, because we haven't gone through the complete process yet. NEAS asks us to, uh, submit any substantive changes in our substantive change report. Where that impacts the library is mostly in staffing, not in funding. Um, so, you know, we would have to report if we, for instance, um, reduce the number of librarians that we had, or the number of, uh, school counselors, but not actual funding.
I mean, the, the process for NEAS, as it stands right now for both schools, is really in reflection mode, you know, and looking back over the last ten years and some of the initiatives that we've had. And, you know, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a snapshot in time of right now. When the NEAS committee comes to visit, in, in our case, which would be the spring of twenty nineteen, and David, a year later, um, at Ward, you know, there'll be some questions where they're live interviewing the staff members. And so if there are, if the manifestation of a reduced budget comes to be where it's impacting teachers, that's probably where they would make some commentary, and, and the NEAS committee would report on that. But as we go through the self-study right now, there, there, you know, you wouldn't see any impact of what the budget is proposing.
So I just wanted to follow up on a comment, as Vitale said. I mean, twenty percent is twenty percent. So it's coming from somewhere. Um, I just didn't want to mislead you to think that even with your submitted question, I was going to be able to give you much more specificity than we did tonight.
I'm going to say, based on the questions that were asked, it might, I'm sorry. I, I, I thought I looked over here and I didn't see any hands. I don't know who went first, so I'll start with Mrs. Max and Connolly, Mr. Acer, and Mrs.
Um, just two questions. Uh, my first was, I was, I actually enormously appreciate your examples. I think those are excellent to bring into life. I was wondering if you could give an example from one of the core academic areas? And, and I say that because for the students who are enrolled in baking and pastry, that's an example that will, you know, resonate with them very much. So I'm looking for an example that will resonate with a wider swath of parents.
Yeah, for instance, um, you know, I think similarly to what, you know, I was speaking about regarding, um, the utilization of online materials in both, in the library area, um, I know for, like, a lot of times, some of the money that we are allocating in the core areas is for textbook replacement. Um, we haven't, we do, actually do an excellent job, I think, if anybody were to actually do a comparative analysis of Fairfield Public Schools and how, how well we retain textbooks. do a comparative analysis of Fairfield Public Schools and how well we retain textbooks with the system that we use, and what our bookroom manager for both schools is able to accomplish is remarkable. But even so, once the district buys those materials for us with a new curriculum, it's now on the buildings to fund any replacements if there is attrition, you know, on some of the textbooks. So like, for instance, in world language, although like at Ludlow, it's only a $2,000 reduction, one of the things that we realize is that we may not, with the recent purchase of newer textbooks and the increased use of online resources, there's not as much a need to allocate money for replacement textbooks. So that would be an example that affects really all the core areas.
Thank you.
So I would think possibly another one might be in music, for instance. So they're still getting $10,000. You know, they're being reduced by $4,000. So where you might see it there, if you've ever actually been to our district office for music, there's scores and scores and scores and scores and scores and scores and scores of sheet music. So they might pick something that's already there.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. And then I had one-
See, music is a core area in Fairfield, just in case you're wondering.
I was not about to challenge that. My second question was more of a tossing out there, that I don't know who would keep track of this. So through the chair to Dr. Jones, or to our headmasters, who I know communicate with each other quite a bit, in referencing tapping into other sources of funding, whether it's PTA council, foundations, your own PTAs, I know one thing we're dreading taking up, but eventually will be taking up in policy, is the issue of booster clubs. And the point being is that there's a recognition that district-wide, specifically with our PTAs, that there might not be same levels of resources, funding, pools, I don't want to say pools of money, sources of funding. And so I'm wondering, to what degree does the district keep tabs on their being able to go to their PTA for this, and this could be, this is high school or elementary schools, to what degree do we keep tabs on they're getting this because their PTA is able to and other schools' PTA either can't or is not? And thus, at some point, you're going to have an inequitable academic experience as we look to those other sources of funding. So I'm not sure who answers that, so I'll just put that out there, and through the chair, maybe start with Dr. Jones.
Might it be the PTA council that would look at all of these PTA budgets and say, you know?
From my experience with PTA council, they would, they're not in a position with their volunteers to do that level of maintenance, keeping track of what each of the schools are doing. They always ask at every PTA council meeting, you know, "What's anybody doing out there? What can you share?" And, you know, and they're very giving of information. But I'm getting to something a little bit more at the level of central office of needing to keep track of. So again, I put that question out there.
It is something we need to do a better job of, as far as keeping track of, you know, where the PTA funding is going. Is this building able to raise, at their fundraiser, much, a great deal more money, for instance, than at another school? Looking at the foundation, the PTA and money that is at district level is distributed really well. You know, it's very equally distributed. Foundation does a great job, but could there be some inequities from building to building? Absolutely. And I think it's, you probably see it more in a building where you have some teachers who have discovered Donors Choose, something like that. And so maybe they want school specialty, unique furniture in their classroom, and that is funded through donations. And if you have a really strong parent group in your school, they will fund those for you. So that's what we're really trying to watch out for, is make sure, we don't want to discourage that, but it is making sure if there is an inequity, that becomes a district responsibility to keep it balanced.
Mr. Okay.
So, no, so I guess I just say, is that, so how does it, how does that rise to anyone's level of attention? Is that, are the headmasters and principals, are they asked this periodically? Or is it just a, "Hey, I hear someone say, 'Got this, we don't ...'" I'm not saying I know what system could be in place to keep track of this. I would just hate for us always to be in a reactive position on this.
I would say the high schools do such a good job of staying relatively on the same page with that, and communicate really well. There are only two buildings. It's elementary, that becomes the most challenge, challenging with 11 school sites. So we still, we need to do a better job at making sure we are staying balanced, especially now, because we're, you know, we're going to continue to rely more on grants and that sort of funding, I think, going forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Asor.
I will just say that the, shout out to the PTAs of both high schools, that they stay in close contact as well. I mean, the leadership council from both, you know, they meet and they discuss joint endeavors that they can engage in, and I think they share ideas. You know, sometimes, over the course of our time together as headmasters, I know we've made phone calls to say, "Hey, I heard that your PTA, you know, funded this, is there, you know, can you give us some more information? Because we're thinking, our PTA is thinking about doing something similarly." And that's, you know, that's gone both ways, so.
Mr. Asor.
Kudos to them.
So luckily, I don't have another question for you, so, but I just did want to compliment and thank you for coming up and giving that explanation. I think that was very helpful. And I applaud you for your common sense approach on how you're handling these tough decisions. So, thank you.
Mrs. Jacobson.
Okay. One last question for me on this.
What page?
Oh, I'm sorry. Ninety-five.
This is the last question on this section?
Well, they probably don't need to be on the page, but it still has to do with what I want to ask them about. For both of your schools, sports, drama, music, the reductions that you have in those areas, any lost teams, any lost performances, any lost, any impact on any of the things that we are currently doing or ability to move forward in any of those areas, sports, drama, music at your schools, due to the reduction in those things? So in other words, I want to know if we're going to be losing any teams, if we're not going to be able to buy the equipment that we need, if we're not going to be able to have as amazing as concerts as we always have, or the performances, the shows, et cetera.
Again, the actual reduction where it is will be, needs to still be determined in some areas. It might be, for example, putting off a uniform replacement for a year. The uniforms might just have to last us another year, so you might see something like that in sports costs. It doesn't mean they're going to play less games, or they're going to travel less. We were very fortunate, you know, Greg and I actually came back to central office and met with Mrs. Monsell, with the athletic directors, and said, "We just cannot do it with the funding, with the 20%." And they restored $50,000 to each school, so that was very helpful. There's certain fixed costs in things like the transportation and sports costs and things of that, joining certain leagues, you know, the costs are fixed. They don't take a 20% reduction just because we did. I think when you look at something like the drama, it's kind of a minor reduction. I think they'll be able to absorb that. It certainly will have a fall production, will have a spring production. They may look at the particular one they choose for the spring production and see what the royalty costs are. They may decide to do something different with the staging. And I think the same thing might hold true with music costs, most of that, excuse me, for us at the, at Ward High School is a carillon performance, and it may impact something as, you know, minor as the lighting section of the particular music or something. So I think there's ways for them to kind of determine how they're going to be able to find that money.
I think when it comes to sports costs, one of the, it's probably one of the biggest moving targets for us. I mean, particularly because there's a lot of money that's allocated for transportation. And really, depending on the success of our teams, if, you know, if they move deep into the FCAC and state tournaments, and we all want to celebrate those successes, and we hope that happens, it costs money to bus the kids to additional practices and bus them to additional games, you know? And so, you know, there might be officials that need to be paid for, or, you know, the monitoring of the crowd of their home games, you know? So it's one of those inverse proportional, you know, relationships, the more success you have, the more expensive it is too. So sometimes, you know, we have leeway at the end of the year, depending on how successful some of the teams have been. I agree with David in terms of, I don't think we'll lose anything in terms of performances. Just this afternoon, I was meeting with my auditorium manager, we're talking about, if we could make a small capital purchase, we might be able to save money in our rental costs, which would pay for itself after only two or three years. So it might be, you know, something that we just think about in terms of like, you know, buying a rotating light that might cost $800, where it costs, you know, maybe $1,600, you know, to rent two of them. So get by with one, and we'll, it'll be paid for after a couple of years. So that's just the type of thing that we're looking at.
Shall I move on to page 37? And before I do, could I ask the audience if there are members here who are waiting patiently in order to make public comment at the end, so I can make sure I allow time for that? If there's anybody that is here, please raise your hand, so I can think of it. I don't see any hands raised, so thank you very much. Page 37. Tuition. Any questions? Hmm? Page 37?
That's transportation is on top.
But the-
Transportation.
Yes, I know, but the agenda says tuition.
Right.
We're just dealing with the tuition on this particular date, yeah. The tuition on page 37.
This certainly is an item that has our attention. The sheet that Mrs. Monsell gave to us is something I'd like to refer to in terms of looking at the increased costs in tuitions since the 15-16 school year. And this has kind of prompted us to think differently in terms of programming and increasing our collaboration with families to try to get students programmed back in the Fairfield Public Schools. In the 2015-16 school year, you could see tuitions were roughly $6.3 million. In 16-17, they were roughly $7.2 million. Our estimated for this current year is 8.8, with a projection for next year of $9.3 million. So those are your real costs of our outplacements before applying excess costs to offset some of that. On page 154, you will see what our projections for the 18-19 school year is. At this time, we're projecting three DCF or DDS or court-placed students. We're projecting 19 students at SES and Trumbull Cooperative Educational Services. That's through the Fairfield Public Schools, through the PPT process. And then other private outplacements, we're projecting 50 that will also be placed by the Fairfield Public Schools through the PPT process. And then we're projecting 30 outplacements. We have two outplacements there designated a little bit differently, because those, we settled, we signed settlement agreements with parents to avoid prolonged litigation on those two cases. And then you have, you know, your projected excess cost number with your net projected cost of $5.385 million. Any questions?
Mrs. Gerber, followed by Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli.
So just to clarify here with the number of students, so the total number of students, excuse me, outplays is 102?
That's what we're projecting for next year.
Okay, projecting. And this year, I just pulled up last year's budget, and last year, it was, the total was projected at 82. Where are we as of now?
Right now, as of today, I believe we're at 97.
Okay. So we've gone up 17.
Yes.
From the projection.
From last year's projections. The numbers are very discrepant.
Right. So I guess with that in mind, looking ahead, do you think this 102 number is, and I understand the difficulties in trying to figure that out, but looking at an increase of 17 from the projected from last year, and I know you weren't here then, so, but, and now, you know, we're up only five from what we have right at this moment.
We are working on collecting information regarding tuitions almost daily the past couple of weeks, because I'm trying to negotiate the difference in numbers from this year to last. I will say, many of our settlement agreements are ending, and we're working with parents to return to Fairfield Public Schools, as well as many of our outplacements. We do currently project 102 for next year, because we are still involved in some ongoing mediations that yet to be, have yet to be settled.
And so I guess, too, that with the 102, is that, keeping in mind with the new programs, the CLC, the elementary CLCS, and the new CLC at Tomlinson, is that?
Yes, that's already been factored in.
That has been factored in.
Well, the Tomlinson program has already been factored in.
But not the CLCS.
Not the CLCS. We've recently outplaced a couple of elementary students, so we're going to be communicating with parents for a potential return.
Got it. Okay. All right, thank you.
Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli.
I know this from prior executive sessions with the board, but I was hoping you could maybe explain, for the sake of all nine, as well as anyone else still paying attention, the difference between the PPT-placed outplacement versus unilateral?
Unilateral placements are placements made unilaterally by parents in private schools, and then they file for due process to go to mediation and seek reimbursement for those placements. They're not through the PPT process. They may have gone through the PPT process, and the Fairfield Public Schools' PPT may have refused a request for an outplacement, because we feel that we can provide an appropriate program in district. The parents feel differently, so they often then will file for due process, which the first step before going to a hearing is usually going to mediation.
Right. So it's very important that the board notice the asterisk, which is that this legal placement, the unilateral placements, this is without the legal fees, which are extensive when you're talking about for these 30 students.
Thank you for bringing that up. Yes, it is very extensive. And unfortunately, we have the burden of proof to prove that our program is appropriate. We're on the defense from the start. And, you know, sometimes we do have to settle to avoid really prolonged and expensive, you know, due process cases, that if we lose, we're, you know, we may also get the bill for the parents' attorneys.
And so then, just finally, this, and that was the question, again, I'm trying to look at my answers, but I really thought we had been on a downward track. I mean, this is a very sharp increase for these outplacements, and I thought this was an area where we had been making some headway of restraining that a bit. So to have gone up 17 from what we expected this year, obviously, I know you cannot reference anyone specific, but what has happened that it's that stark? Because I find 17 is very startling and comes with a very hefty price tag.
Is this the budgeting issue from last year?
Yes, it does.
I think it's missing students.
And I continue to look at the numbers to figure out why there's such a discrepancy.
And I believe, if I overheard Mr. Dwyer correctly, in terms of, have we made some, so we are making some budgetary commitments, however, that we believe will start to rein that in?
We believe the programming we're putting in is going to have a positive impact, all the way from the elementary program facilitators to be able to work with parents, to have consistency across our schools, through our intensive program at the high school, we think the CLCs, they all have impact in keeping kids with us, and keeping, and working with our families, so they feel like they have a great program for their children. I will say, though, too, if you look at last year's budget book, and then you look at this one, and you're looking at the same page, it looks different. And that's, we've really been challenged over the last, really, couple months, trying to figure out where, exactly how the numbers were pulled last year, because it was different, a different person. And it is, there's some discrepancy even within understanding the numbers of outplace. And if you remember back to last year's budget, we always talked about 72 students, and then when we put ESS in, we talked about it dropping to 67. And there was a lot of discussion about that, at least from my perspective, when I came in the middle of last year, we weren't really talking about unilateral placements, but there is a cost to those students. So I'm not sure we were always talking about apples to apples and- not sure we were always talking about apples to apples and oranges to oranges in the discussion previously, where I think we're trying to just, making sure we all understand that. And that's another reason applying the even excess cost. Just tuition is going to be very helpful for us, because it's making it a little bit clearer. And this chart looks different, actually, if you go back and look at last year's.
Okay, and I will take a look back at it, because obviously, those discrepancies are certainly what very much give rise to my reaction of what is going on. All right, thank you.
Mrs. Jacobson.
So I just wanted to ask how we were covering the increase in tuition for this year that wasn't appropriated in last year's budget.
You may recall that we have talked in the past about the 2.3 that is being held in reserve, and even if that 2.3 is available to us, we may be spending a lion's share of it on the increased costs of special education. So, I mean, at the end of the day, we balance our budget. So when you say, "Where does this money come from?" The superintendent and her staff are responsible to find savings in various places to cover increases in other places. Right now, we have the 2.3 set aside to cover lost income, which we didn't receive as much, but later on decided to hold on to that in case the state decides to cut us mid-year, and also in recognition that we were having increased special education costs. So it's going to come out of the 2.3, as a quick answer.
And so the line items that are within that 2.3, then, don't get that funding?
Correct.
And that happens every year. Yeah.
Every year, in June, you will find that we do that budget reconciliation motion, and I'm going to say 1 percent, give or take, of the budget, of the $170 million budget, about 1 percent of it. We have to shift from one line item to another line item in order to cover the pluses and minuses that occur in budgeting 18 months out. Mrs. Pitko.
Sorry, the hamster head is going double time in the wheel. I have like a fundamental question. We're sitting here talking about numbers and outplacements. Would it be better for us to follow the data that says, give the services to the kids in the elementary school, the therapy, to help them early on to everything that they need, rather than waiting to a point when parents lose trust in us and faith and start taking us to mediation?
That's an opinion piece. Thank you very much. We have 14 minutes left. On to contracted services. On to contracted services, page 35. Any questions from the board on page 35? Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I have two questions. So, looking specifically at the line items, which are on page 73, the first one would be the technical consultants, and that one shows an increase. And I know in the executive summary, it mentions further enrollment and/or facility study from Malone and McBroom. Now, I was under the impression, have we spent all the initial money that we used with Malone and McBroom for-
We have, we have a little bit left for this current year.
Okay.
If we wanted them to come back and do a presentation or to talk to the board-
Right, okay, yeah, I thought you'd mentioned that, so I just wasn't sure exactly how much it is. So now, basically, we're looking at 20,000, and that would be solely for Malone and McBroom, should we need it?
Yeah, and it actually, what we've listed, and it's almost on, it's on the very last page, page 17, item number, where we answered number five. And it's the anticipation for questions about Mill Hill, racial imbalance, or program deficiencies. We just figured that with all of the discussion that's going to be coming, that the board may need to have additional work. Wouldn't necessarily have to be Malone and McBroom, but more than likely, that is what, who it would be utilized for.
Right. And I guess, part of that is, so that would be, though, for the 18-19-
Right.
-school year. So I guess, you know, knowing that we had some fairly lengthy discussions at the last meeting regarding Mill Hill and questions, and whether or not we would want to have Malone and McBroom come, would they, with the money that we have remaining, be able to come this school year, and then, but then, the 20,000 that you have budgeted wouldn't kick in until July 1st of this year?
Right. They would be able to come, and I think speak to work they've already done in clarifying questions and being able to talk about the capacity study. If we wanted them to do additional work, then we would need additional funding.
Okay. So if, I guess my question is, if for some reason, between now and June 30th, there was a discussion and there was a pressing need, you know, regarding, you know, if we wanted to vote on the ad specs for Mill Hill or something like that, but wanted to have more conversations, that would, we'd have to find that money somewhere else, because we really, we don't have that much funding left from Malone and McBroom this year-
Right, that's correct.
-that would be for next year. Thank you. And then, one other question I have is also regarding the, the legal fees of the legal services. Do we know, and I know this is a question that's come up in previous years, kind of where we are as of now with legal fees? Would we be able to get that information? I think I meant to ask that question, and I don't believe I did, so I apologize for not doing so. But I'm just kind of curious to see where we are, you know, especially considering the fact that we did have, you know, some major contracts, you know, which I know took quite a bit of time. So I, you know, I'm just kind of curious as to where, where we are, you know, overall with that, that line item that we have budgeted.
We can certainly get where we are today.
We had a memo of a year and a half ago or so that broke it down by certain categories. I presume you could provide a memo of that nature by the same categories to have a sense of where we spend our money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions on page 35? Questions on page 35? No hands going up. The last section of capital is page 44-45. 44-45. And Mr. Cullen has been waiting patiently all night for the prospect that he might be asked a question. Any questions on page 45, as well as, I'm sorry, there we go, Nancy, I'm sorry. Both staff, capital outlay and technology. Questions on page 45. Mrs. Gerber, followed by-
I apologize, my book fell apart in the middle of reviewing it, so I kind of have pages all over the place. I was reading it really, as that was really. So regarding technology, I guess my question is that I see that the amount is less than it was last year, and I guess my question is, was that something that we were kind of planning all along, or is this something regarding the current budget situation that, you know, had we not, if we weren't in the straits we're in regarding state issues and whatnot, would this number be higher, or was this always anticipated to be this number? I guess that's my question.
Okay. Well, please state your name.
Hi, I'm Nancy Burns, Director of Technology for the district. It's actually a twofold answer. Yes, there's, part of it is the budget constraints and trying to keep things down. But in our five-year plan, this is what I would call a dip year. We don't have as much equipment that's scheduled for replacement on our five-year plan. We had also sort of strategically planned to do that, because we were also asking the town for the switch investment that initially, we weren't sure would be in the operating budget or the non-recurring. As you all know from your vote, thank you very much last week, of pushing that forward, we're trying to do the switch project through the non-recurring capital program, because it is an infrastructure investment. So those factors all played into the reduction in the number. We will see that number go back up.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question, I'm sorry, Mrs. Vitale. Other questions for page 45? Mrs. Maxon Cunnily.
Sorry, to page 99. Is the request for 1.4, is that compensating for the 2.35 that was held in reserve, or is that still something that we're doing without? So you mentioned that it was a dip. Would the dip have been more, or is this what it, I said the question.
I think I understand where you're going. The dip would not have been, would have been greater if we didn't have the cut.
So this is attempting to capture and make up for some of that 2.35?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
We have done some deferred spending.
And a lot of times, whenever we talk about reducing the expense on a line item, the proper word is, "We are deferring an expense to a future accounting period," because it's not like these expenses just don't have to be made. And every time you defer an expense, then, one, it costs more, and, two, ultimately, that probably means that something else was deferred that was going to be done the following year, then has to get deferred yet another year. We especially see that in our waterfall chart when it comes to overall large capital projects. Other questions on page 45? Mrs. Gerber.
This is a question regarding the capital outlay. I guess, here in the, on page 45, it says, "Significant decreases in maintenance equipment and equipment replacement accounts were countered with an increase in special education equipment to replace aging assistive technology devices." Where is that increase? That would be on page 99? Is that, I was looking for it, and I didn't see it, but maybe I'm just looking in the wrong place. Because I see the decrease here. It's a decrease of $40,000. That's 62 people per personnel services, equipment, special ed, assistant tech. And so that's reduced by 40,000, but I didn't see an increase, so I didn't know if that was in a different page or different section. Through the chair to Mr. Manquessy.
Hi, I can speak to that decrease. Katie Cronin, one of our AT specialists, is still here. Thank you for coming. We reduced that, that line item by $40,000 in consultation with Katie.
Okay, but I guess my question is, it says here, "It was countered with an increase in special education equipment to replace." So that's my question. I see where the reduction-
Forty-five.
Oh, okay.
It's a typo.
It's a typo. Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because that, it didn't line up. So that's, but that answers the question.
All right, that's an error.
However, that line item is 30,000 this year. It is going to 50,000 next year, so it's a-
Right, it's just confusing, because it says the decrease was countered by an increase, so it makes it sound like there's an increase somewhere, but, so it wouldn't be countered by a decrease, it would just be decreased.
Correct. I think that's correct. Other questions on page 45?
I have one more, I'm sorry. The other question I have here is the, under business services, so I don't know if this would be through the chair to Mr. Cullen. There are a couple of fairly sizable decreases here. Equipment, new classroom, equipment, district, and equipment replacement schools. I just wasn't sure what those entailed, because they're pretty large. I mean, it's a small number, but it's a large percentage of the total. So I was just curious if there was some insight as to that. And I'm sorry, that's page 99, under 64, business services. And it says, three large decreases that result in a total of 19,000.
Yeah, there's one line of increase and three of decrease.
There's one increase, so I guess that, that would also be a question. The one $25,000 increase for maintenance custodial is, kind of helps balance out, so it's not too large an overall increase, decrease.
I'll say through the superintendent, Mr. Cullen, I'm waiting for you to stand up and come forward.
Looking for it.
The business services capital belongs to who?
I guess that would be me.
Okay.
Oh.
You should come forward for the mic, I'm sorry, but the audience is still out there in TV land.
Ooh, it's almost 11.
Yep. I'm hopeful that this is going to be a 30-second answer, and that we don't have to extend the meeting.
We're just really good at reallocating existing furniture, not anticipating new classrooms that need furniture. So that's what the new classroom, that cut of 12,000 to 50,000, and replacement schools, we're just, we're just getting better at making deal with what we have.
Okay, so if board members want further explanation on that, please add that to a question that you turn in on Thursday. Thank you very much. We did get through all of the items. One question, Mrs. Monsell. There seems as though there's interest by this board to take a strong look at the, I'll say, the half a million dollar reduction in the, that is a result of the 20 percent reduction to the building-based student accounts. If the board added 100,000 instead of 3.1, what does the budget become? And it might be helpful for this board to know from a, from a thought process, if you want to, if a board member wants to pursue that, either finding the 100,000 someplace else, as Mrs. Gerber suggested, you could really trace this half million and that half million and say that's a wash, or you just want to add it. And if you're adding it, what are you doing to the total request that we make to the town? So if you could just provide that in the Q and A document, so that the board might have a sense of what money is worth to the 3.1 versus 3.15 or 2, or whatever it is.
Add 100, okay.
Add 100,000, because every 100,000 would essentially be adding that basically same amount.
Okay.
All in favor of adjournment, please raise your hand. I need a motion. Mrs. Gerber?
Lots of seconds.
Mrs. Vitale, everybody's hand is up. Thank you very much. We'll see you next Tuesday.
Thank you, everyone, for your question.